We're going to call the November 8th Planning Commission to order. Good evening. The Planning Commission meeting is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. We're live on KZLV, Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, Tuesday at 5:00 a.m., and Thursday at 6:00 p.m. Would everyone please stand for the Fledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, to the republic which stands unafraid under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Certainly. Chairman Davenport?
Here.
Vice-Chair John Goines?
Present.
Commissioner Trusdale?
Present.
Commissioner Evans?
Please excuse.
Commissioner Steinman?
Present.
Commissioner Trowbridge?
Present.
Commissioner Dunham?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. I call for your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our action and the appeal and review process if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate you adhering to these rules so we can have a smooth meeting. Do we have a motion to hold the October 11th minutes until 11:29? Or do we need...
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion, but I will be abstaining on that as I was not present at the October 11th meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make motion to hold the minutes to the November 29th Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you. We have a motion for...to hold the minutes until 11:29. Please vote. Motion carries. Let's move on to our housekeeping items. Are there any items that the commission, staff, or applicants of the public wish to have pulled forward for action or removed from the...one motion, one vote? And the consent agenda? I've already got item 9 and 10. Okay. Seeing none, then I'll ask staff for their report.
Right. This has the following abeyance requests. Item 19, VAR 24774, applicants requesting abeyance until 12:06. Item 20, VAR 25011, applicants requesting abeyance until 12:06. Item 21, VAR 25012, abeyance until 12:06. And item 22, VAR 25013, abeyance until 12:06.
Does anyone wish to speak on items 19, 20, 21, 22? Seeing no one, I'd ask if there's a motion.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the abeyance withdrawal request items given by staff.
Please vote. Post. And motion carries. Now, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda is considered routine, recommended for approval by the department, and may be enacted in one motion. Does anyone wish to pull any of the consent agenda calendar? Seeing no one? Is there someone?
Yeah.
Okay. Which one do you wish to pull? 6, 7?
7.
7, okay. We'll get back to you.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah. Is there a motion on number 6?
Mr. Chairman, move to follow staff recommendation for approval of item 6 on the consent of TMP 24765, subject to all staff recommendations and condition.
Thank you. We have a motion for approval of item number 6. Please vote. Post. Motion carries.
That is final action in the absence of an appeal.
Okay. Now, we'll go to item number 6, ANX 247...7, I'm sorry. ANX 24792, applicant owner Davis &amp; Howard Revocable Trust, petition to annex property located on the east side of Sycamore Trail approximately 330 feet south of the Coran Lane alignment. Staff?
The annexation is in order, and staff recommends approval.
Okay. Is the applicant here?
Yes, I'm here for the applicant.
Okay.
We just like this held until the 29th. That's okay.
Hi, James Beller here for the Davidsons. And we would just like this held until the 29th, if that's possible.
Okay. Is that okay with staff?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Then, do we have a motion to hold that until 11:29?
Mr. Chairman, move to hold consent item number 7, ANX 24792, until 11:29. Planning Commission meeting?
If we have a motion to hold, please vote. Post. And that is held. I forgot to ask, was there anyone here that wanted to talk on that item? Okay.
Sir, can you put your address on the record?
Yes, 5275 South Torango.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now, we'll move on to the one motion, one vote. The following are items that may be considered in one motion, one vote. They are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. All public hearings and non-public hearing will be opened at one time. Any person representing an applicant, or a member of the public, or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions, and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. We've already had a request to pull number...item 9 and 10. Is there any...of the commission wishes any other items pulled? Okay. Then, we'll move on to item 8, SDR 24262, applicant owner Gromalo Guillamo Enrina Ariano. For the conversion of a 1,400-square-foot, single-family residence at an office at 10 Sacramento Drive. And number 11, SUP 24772, applicant owner Rancho Del Mar LLC, to add a proposed liquefied petroleum gas station over 228 gallons to an existing service station without automobile repair at 3550 North Rancho Drive. And VAC 24711, applicant owner Pentecostal Temple Church of God in Christ Inc., petition to vacate a 20-foot ride public alley between F Street and G Street approximately 140 feet south of Madison Avenue, and 10-foot wide portion of F Street, G Street, Jefferson Avenue, and Madison Avenue. Staff? No. Yep. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward on items 8, 11, 12. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, move to follow staff's recommendations on one motion, one vote on items 8, 11, and 12. Move for approval, subject to all staff's recommendations and condition.
Motion for approval, please vote. Post. And motion carries.
All items go forward to City Council on December 5th.
We'll move back to item number 9, SUP 24798, applicant owner GSJV LLC, for a hotel lounge bar at the northwest corner of Ogden Avenue and Las Vegas Boulevard. And item 10, SDR 24794, for a single-family hotel and hotel lounge bar with waivers of downtown Centennial Plan landscape and built-to-line standards. Staff?
This request is compatible with the downtown Centennial Plan, and staff recommends approval. And we'd also note that Public Works has some amended conditions.
Okay.
We have amended conditions for item number 10.
Okay. You want to read them now?
Certainly, if you'd like. On item number 10, condition number 19, in the sixth line, it says "the 10 feet of right-of-way", and we would like to change that to just say "the right-of-way" behind the curb, not specify the 10 feet. And then, in condition number 20, we'd like to revise that entire condition to read as follows. This site plan shall be revised to remove the drop-off area as shown along Las Vegas Boulevard. The proposed valet-unloading area within the public alley shall receive specific written approval from the city engineer prior to the submission of any construction drawings for review or issuance of any permits for this site. May I start over? I've confused myself. My cadence's gone off. I apologize, guys. All right, let's try again. This site plan shall be revised to remove the drop-off area as shown along Las Vegas Boulevard. The proposed valet-unloading area within the public alley shall receive specific written approval from the city engineer prior to the submission of any construction drawings for review or issuance of any permits for this site. However, if the public alley or any public right-of-way is not utilized for valet-unloading, written approval from the city engineer shall not be required.
Thank you. And applicant, do you accept those conditions?
Good evening. Liz Sorokak, 3-800 Howard Hughes Parkway. I would actually like to request that this item be trailed until Ms. Keach from my office arrives.
Okey-dokey.
Thank you.
Is that okay with you?
Tom McGowan, Las Vegas resident. It's okay with me on the condition that she arrives tonight. If she's going to arrive tonight, and in so what time? And incidentally, this is related to item 10, is that correct?
Yes.
Where is the...the site of our review? It'd be interesting to take a look at it. While you're having the overhand, I'm going on the assumption, reasonable assumption, and it looks something like this. And you can focus in on that. But the reason I'm here is I may very probably agree with the approval of the item.
Mr. Chairman?
If we're going to trail this, why don't we save the testimony until that point in time?
That's fine. I agree.
And maybe you can...staff can show you that in the interim.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. We're going to trail items 9 and 10. And that would bring us over to item number 13. VAR 23598, applicant owner Donna De La Cruz. To allow a proposed 2,700-square-foot accessory structure Class 1 habitable where 528 feet, 50 percent of the floor area of the principal dwelling is the maximum allowed at 5413 Hickman Avenue. Note, this applicant has been amended to include a variance to also allow the accessory structure to be 18 feet in height where 14 feet is the maximum height allowed. And SUP 23596, for a proposed 2,790-square-foot accessory structure Class 1 habitable. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, staff finds that the requested variance is a self-imposed hardship and therefore recommends denial, and subsequently is recommending denial of a specialty use permit.
Thank you. Applicant?
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Paul Hoffman, Moran Law Firm, 630 South Ford Street, on behalf of the applicant.
Donna De La Cruz, 5413 Hickman Avenue.
And, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, first of all, and perhaps most importantly, we will stipulate on the record that the primary structure will not be used as a rental unit. I know that many of the commissioners had concerns about that, so we will stipulate that the primary structure will not be used as a rental unit. This project represents Ms. De La Cruz's dream house. She has children. She has relatives throughout the country who come and visit. And she feels it would really be constructive ways to tear down the primary structure when she's building her dream house, which will be her accessory structure. I mean, this is RE-owned, and hypothetically, if she could accomplish this by subdividing a lot, but I think we can all agree that could lead to a situation that the Planning Commission wishes to avoid in this area of having rental units. So, with that, I'd like to submit it.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and ask the Commissioners...Commissioner Dunham?
Yep. Here's my issue with this, is that if we grant this variance, it's going to...precedence in this area. I don't want to be coming back with, you know, every meeting, we're going to have somebody that says, "Well, Ms. De La Cruz got a variance for this, and so we would like the same." Like I said, it's going to be a precedence. I think I can solve your problem in that if you subdivide this lot and create two legal lots, which you can do, on the east side of that house, she can dedicate a 20-foot access easement to access the rear part of the lot. She can have two legal lots. She can own both lots. She can do whatever she wants with the other lot. Everything's legal. She would not have to come before us for any reason. So, that...my recommendation would be for denial, and that you seek a land surveyor to create a parcel map to create two lots.
Could I respond to that? If we could have the overhead. Can we have the overhead, please? Commissioner Dunham, when you're speaking regarding the rear of the lot, are you talking about this area?
Check.
That area is not owned by Ms. De La Cruz, I think. You've spoken to Mr. Moran about this. There's a 10-foot strip that is owned by another party who is unwilling to vacate that strip.
I understand that. But you can create a 20-foot-wide access easement along your east property line where you're showing the access drive in gray on your dis... It would be the...the way she's going to access it physically, she could act...she could create a legal access easement. And by doing so, you would not have to come before this board for any variances.
It's my understanding that the RE estates have to be 20,000 square feet.
Oh.
Donna De La Cruz, the applicant?
Yeah.
If that's correct, this lot is mostly about 30,000 square feet. So, I would be shy on each lot, 5,000 square feet. So, I think I would still need some kind of variance or rezoning to do the proposed splitting.
If that is in fact the case, I would be more inclined to grant you a variance for lot size than to allow the present variance to go forward. I just think the present variance going forward is going to set a precedence in this area that is...that we're all going to be dealing with after I'm long gone from this Planning Commission.
Right. And I respect that. And because the existing house is so small, it's like a guest house. And the problem is, it's in the front of the lot, which is against the rules. And so, when I first started researching this, I thought, "I appear to have a through lot. I appear to have a lot that goes from one street to another." But as I started researching, and I saw that this lot exists that's 15 feet wide and prevents me from having a through lot, that's where the problem came in. So, I vacated the public land that ran through my lot earlier in the year, and I still have this 15-foot strip that is privately owned, so I don't have a through lot. If I had that through lot, I could, I believe, change my address to the north side of my lot, build my primary structure in the same spot that I'm requesting, and I end up with the same situation, one little house that looks like a guest house and one large house that it would be our primary residence.
Yeah. I understand your dilemma. And in fact, when I spoke with Ms. Moran earlier on this, I gave him the address of the owner of that strip of land.
Yes. And I have contacted him as well, so has my neighbor, so has...
And he's not willing to sell, or vacate, or provide an access easement, or anything like that?
No.
Okay. And I understand that. But again, I think going forward with the present variance will set a precedence in this area that I don't want to deal with. And it's...if I could be assured that this would be the only variance of its kind granted in this area, I might step on your side of the fence. But the minute we set a precedence, Mr. Moran and all of his attorney friends are going to be seashells with applications just like this.
Understood.
And they're going to say, "Well, Mrs. De La Cruz got one. Why can't I?"
Right.
And it's that precedence that I don't want set in this area.
Right.
That's my issue. It's not the physical aspects of the two houses on the lots. It's the legal aspect of this type of variance.
Right. And when I first started looking at it, I says, "I really am building a primary residence. The existing house is so small, that's the guest house, but it breaks the rule of being in the front yard." So, it's really the order that the houses were placed on the lot, and which house is smaller and in the front. You see what I'm saying? So, it's...I end up with the same thing. Two houses, one small guest house and one primary residence. It's just in the back of the lot.
Yes, ma'am. I understand that. But it has a variance that I don't want to see in this area, and it sets a precedence that I don't want to have to deal with, or my successors have to deal with. That's the issue. It's the fact that you're putting two houses on there. We can...you can legally...you can legally solve that problem. It's the precedence that would be set if this variance were to go forward.
With a zoning change, I could legally solve the problem.
You would not change the zoning.
To go down to 15,000 square feet per lot?
By doing that, it would create two substandard lots, 15,000 square feet. We could not do that as a variance because the general plan designation of the property is DR, which only allows two units to an acre. 15,000-square-foot lots would exceed two units to an acre. So, variance is not an option. A variance to create two lots.
No comment?
I'm still mulling this over. That was a point that was not brought up in my conversation with Mr. Moran's office, and I did not think of it either. I have to apologize on that.
No problem. I mean, I've learned a lot researching all this, it's just come out and what I've looked at, because I've thought about that. I've talked to the Planning Department many times, and we've thought about all the different ways, and just can't change the address. We can't subdivide without all these...
Would you mind if we trailed this for a few items, so that I can do a little research real quick?
Certainly.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Okay. Then, we will trail items 13 and 14. Is item 9 here yet?
13 and 14.
No?
She's here.
Okay. We've been waiting for you. We'll go back to items 9 and 10, and I've already read that into the record, and we had staff report. Are you aware of the two changes that Public Works had?
Mr. Chairman, for the record, Tabitha Keach, 3-800 Howard Hughes Parkway, here on behalf of the applicant. I would like to hear them again if I could. I'm aware, I think, but I just want to make sure it's what we agreed to.
Absolutely. On condition...or on item number 10, SDR 24794, I'd like to revise condition number 19. On the sixth line, it says "the 10-foot of right-of-way behind the curb," and I'd like to revise that to "the right-of-way behind the curb" to eliminate the 10-foot reference. And on condition number 20, I would like to revise it in its entirety to read as follows. The proposed valet-unloading area within the public alley shall receive specific written approval from the city engineer prior to the submission of any construction drawings for review or issuance of any permits for this site. However, if the public alley or any public right-of-way is not utilized for valet-unloading, written approval from the city engineer shall not be required.
Perfect.
Okey-dokey. Any other comments? This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward.
Yes. Tom McGowan, Las Vegas resident, this is item 10.
9 and 10.
9 and 10 together. With no disparaging...a sense of disparagement to the applicant or the applicant's representative, I would like both items held to be...replaced to the...an open public hearing by the Las Vegas City Council for the following reasons. This representation is rendered right here seems simple and generally acceptable by most people, I think, by their standards, in the sense of it being that limited. However, this district is not a limited district. It's very important for the success of redevelopment in downtown area of Las Vegas that creative innovation be implemented wherever and whatever possible, peaceful and practical. The somewhat...the measures made to determine conformity with the surrounding area. This wouldn't be conformant at all. The surrounding area is well of excess of one story, and even the parking structures are five, six hundred level. There are multiple, multi-story parking structures in the immediate vicinity that could be implemented by this property, which means the property could theoretically could have a much higher and better use than what is proposed so far on those grounds. And I feel that the applicant very...possibly might be inclined to seriously consider a higher and better use. And if...if it is of interest to the applicant and perhaps an associate or two, and a more aggressive type of development in the financial realm I'm talking about.
This does go to City Council on the 12th for the public discussion you're talking about?
The 12th of December?
Yes. The 5th, I'm sorry.
The 5th of December.
Yeah. The 5th of December, if it passes here tonight.
Well, I hope it does pass here tonight for that reason.
Pardon?
I hope it does pass here tonight for that reason.
Okay.
That it gets to the City Council.
It goes either way.
For further study and consideration. And what about item 9?
Both of them.
You're telling both of them go to the City Council?
Yes.
All right. That would satisfy me then. And I wish the applicant the best success in this, but I think the applicant is probably capable of something much more aggressive, and I mean that in the best sense of the word, than this particular representation. Thanks.
Mr. Furlough, did you...seeing no one else, I'll close the public hearing on item 3...on item 9 and 10, and ask the Commissioners. Commissioner Goines?
Mr. Chairman, I have no questions. You're ready for motion?
Yep.
I move to follow staff recommendation for approval of SUP 2798, subject to all staff's recommendations and condition.
We have a motion for approval of item 9. Please vote. Post. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item 10, SDR 24794, I move to follow staff's recommendation for approval, and also with the amendment of condition 10 and 20 as read in by Public Works.
19 and 20?
19 and 20.
19 and 20. Pardon. My cadence was off.
And the applicant agrees with those?
I do.
Please vote. Post. And motion carries.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. Thanks for waiting for us.
And may vote forward to Council on December 5th.
We are now at 15:16. We don't know which ones we're thinking on here. Item 15, VAR 22867, applicant owner World Wellness Group LLC, to allow 26 parking spaces where 48 is the minimum required for a proposed addition to an existing medical office at 3,100 South Valley View Boulevard. This application has been amended for 29 parking spaces provided where 42 are required. And SDR 21998, for a three-story, 3,970-square-foot addition to an existing two-story, 6,000-square-foot medical office where a waiver...with a waiver to allow no landscaping buffer along a 96-foot portion of the north perimeter, and to allow no landscaping buffer along the east property line. Note, this application has been amended for a reduced gross floor area of 8,110 square feet from the original 9,970-square-foot proposal. Staff?
Chairman, this item was originally tabled by the Planning Commission in order for the applicant to work on the project to reduce the scope and scale of the project. Although the applicant has reduced the scope of the project, staff is unable to support the requested variance, and therefore is recommending denial of both the variance and the site plan.
Thank you. Applicant name and address for the record?
Michael Livingston, Architect with Melgreen Architects, address 231 West Charleston, Unit 140.
Thank you.
And I have the owner with me, Joe Lawrence, with the One World Wellness Group at Las Vegas resident.
Okay. Did you wish to make any comments?
Yes. First of all, the first comment I want to make is to make clear that the owner does own these three parcels and is creating a shared-use access agreement between those parcels. That will come into our presentation. The effort has been made within the plan to decrease the area, which is from 9,970 square feet to 7,710 square feet, which is a decrease in area of approximately 23 percent. And as a result, been able to increase the parking up to 29 spaces, which is an increase in parking of 12 percent. The...what we would like the Planning Commission to consider is the fact that the use of the building, in terms of its staff and visitors, at any one time, will not get up to the 42 parking count. On the first floor, the typical fixed number of staff would be about five people, and eight visitors or visiting patients would be the average. Then, on the second floor, the maximum number of anticipated staff would be about eight, with about eight visitors. And then, on the third floor, where there is also a roof garden... with about eight visitors. And then on the third floor, where there is also a roof garden, the anticipated number of visitors would be four with about two staff. And this was presented at the last Planning Commission meeting, when the owner made a statement that he'd have between ten and about fifteen staff at any one time. Now, since the owner does own the three, the two adjacent sites, and this plan shows the new plan, he is making available, yeah, but he is making available thirteen extra car parking spaces by removing some structures on this side of his property. This means that with the existing twenty-six car parking spaces proposed in the new plan, plus the thirteen spaces over there, there would actually be forty-two available spaces to serve this building. It is also obviously in the interest of the owner and his staff not to park near the building so that visitors and visiting patients would be able to have immediate access. Therefore, in this respect, I think that in terms of the use of the building, I don't think there's going to be an intense use that would adversely affect the parking requirements of the area, and therefore we pray upon the Commission that they would consider this and move this forward to the county, to the City Commission with a recommendation.
Thank you. Did you wish to comment?
Yes, if I may, again, Joe Lawrence, not to take anything away from my colleague's statement, but there really was a lot more consideration and removal and work done that I'd like to make sure the Commission understands. On the initial proposal, I don't know if you can, there was a sculpture garden over here that we planned to have outside the waiting rooms where the patients could go out. It was a high fence, there's going to be sculptures, water, and a very comforting, we hopeful area where there was waiting. We removed that in our first plans, and we found we, since we had to open up a driveway here and make some other changes, we had a net gain of about six spaces after giving up that space right there. So where Mike has identified, we had, we have storied spaces at the other end of the lot that we presently rent. We have agreed, it's already in the plans, to destroy those and make thirteen additional parking places where the staff, unless they have some physical impairment, will be required to park. If you add the thirteen new places, and we was careful, we did not take away any existing parking places. That was our other dilemma. Our first drawing, we ended up taking something away from the other areas, and we knew we couldn't do that. So we totally removed sculpture gardens in the plan, removing the storage shed that were a profit center, if you will, and our make- employee parking, adding the existing spaces near the building and the ones we're going to require the employees to park. We will have exactly forty-two, which is what the code requires. In actual code, it doesn't need it because it's not right adjacent to the building, but in the spirit of having available forty-two spaces as required by code, I believe we have met it.
Where are those other thirteen spaces?
If I can, it's not very clear on, where do you, where do you please? Right, yeah, okay. We created them right here, and I, can you go back up a little, more light, just up a little bit? Okay. What do you have to do with your camera to make it happen? We did remove the storage sheds that were there, or we've agreed to do that, and make that thirteen new parking places that didn't exist on the plan submitted in September. That with the other, and removal of the sculpture garden, which added six, we've come up to forty-two available years for that building.
Noting that the garden is now on the roof.
It'll be on the roof or not at all, but the, on the third floor, let's put it that way.
On the third floor.
But we have sacrificed what we thought was a big part of the building, having, because if you remember, it is a combination of eastern, western holistic medicine, and we were trying to have a little calmer effect to go there, but we, when we did it, we found that we only added six spaces, so we knew that wasn't acceptable in reality and also in code. So we did find by removing those, you know, ones that previously rented sheds, that we could make thirteen more parking places.
Okay.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I like the looks of that building, but I, is there some way of making certain that those thirteen spaces that are transferred or loaned by the one lot to the other, that that's a permanent sort of a deal? I'd like to, and the other thing, I'd like to see that sculpture garden. I hope there's some way you can put it on the roof. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and ask the Commissioner, Commissioner Trusdale?
I have a question.
Oops, Commissioner Stein?
Do you own all three parcels?
Yes.
To be simple. Did you ever consider putting a cross-parking easement?
We, right now, there are three separate parcels. One of the change of zoning that the last committee brought was to change all the same. We're trying to make it one parcel so we could actually use a...
Let me address that as well. Ryan Grobarger, 10220 West Charleston. We did get a cross-access agreement. We have filed that. That is in place already. And as Joe mentioned, we are in process of combining the parcels together, make it one parcel. We've been told that's going to take about a year, so we wanted to be able to move forward while that's in place. So that is in the plans currently to do.
So there is a cross-easement filed?
Yes, it is. Yes.
Okay. Legally, I don't see our attorney down there, but I'd like, it seems to me that assists us in recognizing those parking spaces, but I want legally to make sure that's okay. Now, have you ever looked at the situation when you combine all of it into one parcel with all the buildings that are there? Is there adequate parking to meet code when it's all combined?
Yeah, that's the reason we had to create new parking places, because if we moved, if we tried to use any other ones, we would be underparked.
Even on the combination, when you bring all three parcels?
Combined, they're all...
As it is currently, it meets parking barely for the other two buildings for their use currently. So taking away the storage units that we have and making parking out of those would create the addition.
Well, I, if in fact there are filed cross-easements, I have comfort with that because there is, I say it because there's a possibility, for some unknown reason tonight, you could sell those two parcels off, and then there's no access to those thirteen. And that bothers me, and I, I think it's fine we have these discussions, but we also legally have to have rights to get there.
Yes, sir.
So I think when we do this, we probably need some kind of a condition that's not already in there, staff, relating to cross-easements.
If I may, what we need is a condition requiring the consolidation of the properties.
We agree. We're in the process.
Well, if they don't get that done, how do you protect it until the consolidation occurs?
If I may, Public Works, condition number sixteen requires that they provide a copy of a recorded joint access agreement, if that helps.
That's...
Could modify that to say joint access.
If that's a cross-parking easement, then that's fine.
We did submit that at one time, but we were told since they were separate parcels that we couldn't use that as a representation. So we had, we created new parking places and hoped you would grant a variance.
Yeah, I, I think there's got to be definition of those new parking spaces, that they are part of cross-access.
Right. If I may, the access only gets you from one to the other.
That's all.
And that's why the consolidation of the properties is what we require, and I think Public Works and Planning can work with the city surveyor and come up with the exact language for the proper...
But if you require consolidation, can any of this occur at all before the consolidation occurs?
That's what the variance is for. That's what this allows.
Well, then if we grant the variance, then I want to make sure they can park in the interim.
Right, and that's what I say. We will work with the city surveyor to get the right language with regard to that, and the applicant has agreed that they will do that, and we will get that condition final prior to getting to City Council.
Thank you.
Commissioner Trusdale?
Yeah. There's no question you've done a lot of work, but you've got three buildings here, significant square footage. You're putting medical uses on them. What, I mean, what is the long-term use for these other two buildings? Because I, here's what I think is, most of the parking that you show back here in the corner, these thirteen new spaces, several of those spaces, you can't get a car in, turn out, and back out, I mean, unless somebody's going to back out of the whole lot, which is not our code. So you have a very good architect here making a presentation, but there's no way you can stand there and tell me that it's a medical project on this corner with the intensity of the development you want to do, with cross-parking agreements or not, you're overbuilding this property, you're overburdening a site with medical demands, even if it's only on the front building. The sculpture garden on the roof sounds nice, but that has nothing to do with the parking issue? It's great presentation, but it's not reality for the issue is, you have a site that is underparked, under our current code. And I think with, based on the way you've defined your uses, we use our code to define what parking needs are upon the use of square footage. You can tell us you only have five people on the fourth floor or third floor. Bottom line is, we have to assume that there might be a greater intensity of use. I think you're trying to put way too much on the site for whatever reason. If even, if all these parcels were vacated or merged and all this, I don't see how you get there.
We, as I say, if, we do have a kind of a grand plan that is coming up. That's a very good point, Commissioner. The main idea for this is after we have the first building up and running, is to do phase two and three with these other two buildings. We are, have talked and understand from the very beginning that that's going to have to include a parking structure within those. So once that occurs, that's going to have to be a part of it, because obviously when those two buildings change over to a medical use, as we anticipate, they're going to need to have more parking, and we're going to have to do something that's in levels to be able to create that. So that's, whether or not we, you know, do something where we build a new building, put parking underneath, or put a parking garage in between, there's been ideas that we're going back and forth of that, but we're not going to come back here and ask for another variance for parking without having, you know, obviously, we're going to have to make some...
We're aware that we could not ask this council to grant any other variances for the other buildings without making adequate parking.
Exactly. I, I don't see how we can make the variance on this one building with what you already have in the other two buildings that has proven not to work over the years. I mean, as general office uses, this project has never parked well when it was fully occupied as office. So, you know, you're making, you know, they sound good, but until you had a parking garage or provided additional parking, there's no way you can make this project work. You're going to burden something, you're going to burden adjacent property owners, you're going to burden the street parking, which is already, I mean, every time I've been by there, people are all over the street parking now. So I just don't see, and believe me, I'd like to find a way that made this make sense, but I know this project incredibly well, and it just has, it's parking deficient.
Oh, you understand?
And what you're talking about adding here and adding a medical use is only going to make that more extreme.
I understand your concern. Commissioner, the thirteen is identified. Is it your concern that you say they wouldn't be able to back out and turn around? With removing the parking sheds, I mean, the parking sheds, excuse me, the storage sheds, we've measured, and granted, it's not a great open space, but it is adequate room to back out without causing any risk to other drivers. So it is a net thirteen-space gain to the existing parking area. I do understand your concern, Commissioner, and I appreciate it.
Commissioner Goins, did you have a question?
I just want to put on the record, Mr. Grobarger was the realtor on my, I just didn't realize that it's a realtor on the house that I bought about two years ago, but that deal has been done, and I'll be able to vote on this.
Commissioner Tru...
Just two comments. I'm familiar with this area, and it's in dire need of a facelift. And I think this particular project as presented does dress up the neighborhood. I, too, share the concerns about the parking lot. I'm familiar enough with that parcel that even at one time considered renting some of the office space there, like I mentioned last time before us, and the deficiency in the parking is what caused me to go elsewhere. The condition of the parking lot and the addition of the new parking spaces that are going to result from the removal of the storage units makes the area ripe to have that parking lot totally resurfaced somehow and restripped. And I ask, is that part of the overall plans?
Yes, sir. It's, in the new presentation, if you would look carefully, the striping is even different than the last presentation. We did have to rearrange the actual spaces, which requires resurfacing and restriping to the entire surface.
Now, this question isn't for you, it's for staff. Do we have any kind of a ratio of standard-sized parking spaces to compact spaces, you know?
Yes, it's seventy to thirty, Commissioner. Correct, correct, seventy to thirty. You should have up to thirty percent compact spaces.
But for what staff, to question to staff, Commissioner Tru...
I am.
We have an application that only covers the corner parcel, right?
Correct.
So what we're looking on the other isn't really before us, and it's, I mean, while they own the parcel, it's not a commitment that is part of our application that we can hold to the conditions too.
Yeah, as the applicant discussed, they did offer a shared parking agreement, but per Title 1910, you can't share spaces unless they are at different times and different uses, and also you can't share extra spaces that you don't have extra of. So that's why we weren't able to accept the shared parking agreement as part of this application, therefore the variance was required.
And just one more, one more comment here, and that is that, you know, the figure that you utilized in terms of your need, you addressed the average need for parking is going to be X, Y, and Z for each of the floors. I don't believe that's the standard that we use. We tend to look at the maximum need, you know, because there is no average, you know, if you've got a three o'clock to 5:00 PM when all your patients show up, it's going to be total chaos in that parking lot.
If I may just respond to that, what I was basically trying to point out there was the number of staff that would basically fit into the new thirteen spaces to try and show that, you know, what the number of staff were. Admittedly, you know, also making a point about the number of visitors that were in there, but the point was combined with the idea and the proposal to remove the thirteen or the storing, storage spaces and to make thirteen parking spaces, which would be for staff.
I guess bottom line, as Commissioner said, is we're only asking for that one parcel, so really it comes down to what we're asking of variances. Will you accept the thirteen newly-created parking spaces to go toward the code-required number of parking spaces? With that, we would meet code. I guess I'd have to staff to verify that, please, but that's, that was our fellow requirement. We couldn't physically take the ones there and make it so by creating thirteen new spaces, we did come to the code requirement. If the variance is accepted, I should say.
No, we've already done the public... Yeah, we've closed it.
Okay, any other commissioners?
Your architecture, is this a green design building, or is this...
Yes, we mentioned that last time. That's something important to bring up. We are trying to design with the most efficiency, energy efficiency that is possible. We are designing it towards being able to get it LEED certified. Whether or not we actually go through with the certification is a point that we'll tackle at a later point, but we are going for, during the construction, to have it able to be LEED certified. One of the other options, when we're talking about the rooftop garden, that is something that we and the architects like because of the fact that we can actually use that as a more energy-efficient structure, even more so than it would currently be. as a more energy-efficient structure, even more so than it would currently be. With the ability of having that rooftop garden, there's some things that we can do to address those things. So, that has been the goal in the plan. The other point is that, I know you've mentioned, and I'll mention it again, we are trying to do something that would beautify this area, that would be a need for this area. There is a tremendous amount of multifamily within walking distance of this, you know, building, and would be able to use this facility, and that's what we want it for. We think it's a location that is in need of it, with all the development that's happening along west of the fifteen. It's something we're maybe a little early on, but we're trying to get there to be there for it, and try to do what's best for the area.
Seeing nobody else, I have to agree with Commissioner Truesdale in that, I mean, even back when this was Jack Matthews, there's been a tremendous parking problem there. And, I mean, if we're saying that, I'm not sure I understand the director's, when she was, is that one of the conditions will be that these lots be joined together, but if we do that, will they be able to go ahead and develop this one building?
If I may, what I'm saying is that we'll need to work with the city surveyor to come up with language with regard to that timing issue, so that we can do, as Commissioner Steinman was referring to, ensure that that is in place, or at least legally required, and for us to be able to enforce that, if you go forward with the approval of the project.
Yeah, because with that stipulation, then, when you come back for the developing of the, maybe Commissioner Truesdale would want to comment, but when you come back to us for the development of the other buildings, we would have one lot we're looking at.
Correct.
And we could look at the cumulative parking at that time, and I mean, I think I might be willing to go along with you on that basis, but it just concerns me, because I know this has been a tremendous parking problem down there. My other question would be to public safety, is that driveway on Valley View, I mean, I don't know how many times I've almost got killed coming out of that parking, that driveway, because they go so fast down Valley View. Is that, is, do we have to have that on this lot?
With the site plan as shown, because they've got angled parking, which does not allow two-way drive aisle access, the only way that parking would be accessible would be with that driveway there. And so, the answer would be yes for this site plan.
But the parking is facing the other way.
It's one-way out.
Oh, okay, so they, oh, so it would be an exit only?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. Is there a motion on the floor? Commissioner Truesdale?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. As much as I'd like to find a way to support this, I'd like to make a motion for to follow staff's recommendations for denial.
We have a motion for denial on item number fifteen, please vote. Post, and motion carries.
And with regards to item sixteen, motion is to follow staff's recommendation for denial.
We have a motion for denial on sixteen, please vote. Post, and motion carries.
And all items go forward to City Council on December fifth.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're going to move back to item thirteen-fourteen, and we've already read that into the record and have the applicants, and I believe we've opened the public hearing, but I'll open the public hearing again, in case anyone wishes to speak. And seeing no one, I close the public hearing, and then ask Commissioner Dunham.
Mrs. De La Cruz, it is very painful for me to admit that you have brought me to school on this issue. You don't know how hard it is for me to admit that.
Please note that on the record.
It really pains me. But with that being said, I think I would, on items, can we do this in one motion, thirteen and fourteen, one time? On item thirteen, move for approval with staff's as-if-approved recommendations, noting that the applicant has agreed to file a deed restriction, recorded deed restriction, to not rent what would ultimately become the smaller of the two units.
If I may, that will be on the S U P.
Okay.
Thanks.
We have a motion for approval of item thirteen, somewhat reluctantly. Please vote, post, and that carries.
And on item fourteen, move for approval per staff's as-if-approved recommendations, and noting that the applicant, that we will record a deed restriction restricting the, Mr. Attorney?
No, they'll, they'll, Mr. Chairman, what'll happen is, they'll come to us with a deed restriction, and what you want is a restriction from, restriction from rental of the smaller of the two structures, and it needs to come to the city attorney's office for review and approval, and we're going to see if we can make that work.
If I may, with the new requirement that conditions are then filed by the city at the county recorder's, which was approved yesterday, my thought was that merely a condition that the accessory structure shall not be rented, would be the condition on the S U P., and then that gets filed by us with the county recorder on the title.
Well, yeah, and you know what, that's okay, either way, it's, it's difficult to enforce, and so, I think that that approach is probably better than the deed restriction approach, because really, what are we restricting? We're, yeah, I'm thinking off the top of my head here, but what we're restricting is the use of this property as a rental. Unless the city is a party to that deed restriction, then we can't enforce it anyway. So, I think that just merely putting it as a condition on S U P., like the director has indicated, because of the action taken by City Council, now, all conditions of approval will be placed on the record. I think that that's about as good as we can, as good as we can get.
And you're in agreement with that?
Yes, I am.
Okay, please vote. I believe the motion was for approval.
And my motion is so amended.
And post, motion carries.
And that goes forward to Council on twelve-five.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you very much.
Now seventeen, S D R one-eight-three-four-two, applicant owner, Shabod Southern Nevada, Inc., for a proposed eighty-four thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy-six square foot, forty-four-foot-tall private school with a waiver of the perimeter landscape buffer requirements to allow no landscaping along the north and east property lines, and along portions of the south and west property lines, where a minimum eight-foot-wide buffer is required adjacent to the west side of Vista Drive, approximately five-hundred-and-thirty-foot south of Charleston Boulevard. Note, this application has been amended to seventy-seven thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty-one square feet, and thirty-five-foot-high private school with no landscaping waivers required. And item, okay, staff?
Mr. Chairman, this item was tabled by the applicant in order to revise the plans, in order to, to reduce the intensity of the project. Previously, there was a residential adjacency variance as part of this application, and that has been withdrawn, and is no longer part of the application, and staff finds that this project is in compliance with Title nineteen, and recommends approval.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jay Brown, five-twenty South Fourth Street, representing the applicant, and with me is Howard Perlman, the applicant's architect.
Oh, I can't get anywhere to get to.
First, as you heard, we're merely here tonight for a site development plan review, and that's all. We come here also, as you heard, with a recommendation from staff, and we're asking for no waivers of any kind. One of the main contentions, I think, has been traffic, and we also want to make it clear that if we're fortunate enough to get your approval tonight, we're perfectly agreeable to having a traffic study as a condition of any such approval. Along with that, I took the liberty of passing out to you some conditions that I want to read into the record. I provide the copy to staff and to each of you, but maybe I should for those in the audience who are here to talk on this item. I'll just read them as quickly as I can. The applicant will install a wrought iron fence for vehicular and pedestrian gates, if permitted by traffic and planning, along Vista Drive at the front setback. The applicant will plant five and fifteen-gallon plants along Vista Drive to screen the cars in the parking lot. The applicant will incorporate trees between the building and the property line of Vista Drive to visually reduce the scale of the building. The applicant will require administrative and teaching staff to park in the Harville Street parking lot. The applicant will discourage parking on Vista Drive by the parents of students at all times. There will not be a high school located in the Desert Torah Academy. Okay? We've had numerous meetings, particularly Mr. Perlman and Rabbi with our neighbors, and we want to take this opportunity to thank them for the time and the interest they've shown. We know some of them have not been agreeable to our site plan, and I'm sure you'll hear from them, but we think we made great strides with others. So, with that, I'll turn the microphone over to Mr. Perlman, who'll just briefly review the site plan with you.
My name is Howard Perlman, twenty-two-thirty Corporate Circle Henderson, I'm the architect for Shabod Desert Torah Academy. As Jay said, I won't go into a lengthy presentation. As Jay said, we've been working with the neighbors for a long, long time, it seems like we've been working on this project for well over a year, working back and forth with the neighbors on various schemes. The reason that we withdrew this application and re-studied it was that we did, as Jay mentioned, we did have some variances which we thought were very, very minor, they had to do with building height and so forth. Upon second, upon second review, we looked at, we looked at that, and we decided to redesign the building to eliminate all those variances, which meant that we reduced, I'll put the site plan or the elevation here. See it, maybe? This area right over here, which is adjacent to some single-family houses, we cut the second floor away, and now it complies, the center section of the building was also a little bit taller, we reduced the scale of that, so that now it conforms, all of our landscape is in conformance. I want to say just a little bit about the school, about the existing use that's there Right now, there's an existing building here that's used as classrooms, and is also used as a synagogue. This building over here is also a synagogue and used for classrooms. Right now, there are prayer services that go on in this building, this existing building, three times a day. The plan is, is that this building, so, the plan is that this building here will be used for the synagogue, and so, all the prayers, prayer services and so forth will come in off of, off of our bill, and all of the, all of the students will be then in the school. This back part of the building is a gymnasium, front part is all classrooms, there's one central point of entry, one for the security and the safety of the kids, so there's one drop-off, one pickup point for everybody. But with moving the synagogue over here, we, we think that there's actually going to be less traffic on the street than there is now. All the teachers will park in this lot, which is actually shown over here. About thirty-so of the kids that are in the school are actually kids of the teachers, so they, they're, you know, they'll actually drive and, and drive with their moms and dads and park over here. A lot, there's a lot of carpooling going on, so we know that traffic is a, is a big issue. We tried to do our best to, you know, mitigate it with the, with the design, but there's no, you know, there's no question if there's going to be parents dropping their kids off in the morning and picking them up in the afternoon. We have worked with the neighbors, the conditions that Jay read were a result of a neighborhood meeting, we had several neighborhood meetings, was a result of one neighborhood meeting that we had, where we got together and we said, listen, we are willing to do additional things, look at the plan, tell us what you think you'd like us to incorporate into, into this, over and above what staff is going to require us to do, over and above what we're doing right now, and we'll agree to it, and I'm pretty sure this was all the things, I think the most major thing was, was the fence that they wanted to put along the front of the property. But I could drone on and on, but I think there's other people that want to speak, and I'm here to answer questions.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, anyone wishing to speak, please come forward.
Just a few relevant questions. What, how many stories is the building? Is there a community activity center on the premises? The synagogue double or community activity center, for example?
It's a private school.
A, maybe a private school, but still have activities.
They've got a gym, and...
A gym, okay. There's a gym. And the final question, the age group of the children that will be attending the school and/or on the premises?
It would be kindergarten through eighth grade.
I mean, all different sizes. Who, then, will monitor and enforce the reference made to parking restrictions? Who?
Well, Mr. Chairman, this is...
Yes.
The lawyer. Listen, I do have some, some comments to make about a few of these conditions, one of those being whether or not condition number four, condition number five are truly enforceable by the city. So, maybe before the motion is made and the vote is taken, you'll give me an opportunity to speak on a few of these conditions.
Yes.
Yeah, essentially, that's what I'm driving at, all those questions at the same day. It's not just a school or a synagogue, it is also an activity node, apparently for entire families, at one point or another. And you need to be proactive in your thoughts about this. If it was mentioned to the mothers of the children that will ride with cars, that they should, at their discretion, hopefully not double park and so forth, that's all in the good, I'm sure they're all unattended, but who's going to enforce it? When a forty-year-old, a thirty-year-old, that high, walks behind a car and isn't seen by the driver? That's all. A sad man, a dream.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Small Hall, I live at forty, twenty-one Mountain View Boulevard, and I am the president of the Artisan Heights Neighborhood Association for this area. This is a very low-density neighborhood, with a rural setting and many longtime residents. Many of us have been in the neighborhood for over twenty-five years. We have appeared before the city planning several times in an effort to preserve this unique rural area that's in the heart of the city. That is Charleston to Oak, Harville to Henson, and most of the acreage in that area is one acre of ranch-style properties. We have worked hard to continually improve the area. The proposal before you is not, is not compatible with this unique neighborhood. You should have two pages of petitions from the neighbors. The properties we're talking about is on Vista Drive, that's near the northwest corner of neighborhood. The proposed school would be on three adjacent lots near the center of the block. Last year, the Shabod did ask the neighbors to attend the presentation for the expansion of the school, and later, additional meetings, as they just talked about, was held, and things changed, and the size grew. Several issues were raised, and many options were offered. A consensus was never reached. In June, when we first received the planning meeting notification, that revealed the real size of the project was over eighty-four thousand square feet, and three variances were asked for. But most important is the size, eighty-four thousand square feet. This is enormous, and certainly don't belong in any very low-density neighborhoods. I tried to visualize the building of that size on three acres, and a few days later, after I was thinking about it, I was walking up the steps to the YMCA building on the Meadows Lane. This is a big two-story building. The size of the building at the YMCA is seventy-four thousand, five hundred square feet, which is still... is still smaller than the reduced size of the school. This would not be compatible with any neighborhood and should not be confined to only three acres. Traffic and parking is still a major issue. Indeed, this is a very worthy project, but this project isn't compatible with our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? If you want to speak, come... Yeah, there's two mics. Come on down, so we'll get an idea of the number.
Good day, Commissioners. My name is Tom Bingham, and I reside at twelve oh nine Vista Drive, which is directly across from the applicant's proposed project. I'm a lifetime resident of Las Vegas and, in fact, grew up in this home, so it has a lot of meaning for me. This neighborhood is in a rural preservation area consisting of one half and one acre parcel, zoned for horses. When I get up in the morning and go outside to retrieve my morning paper, what I see is a nice, quiet neighborhood of custom homes. If the applicant's project is approved, what I will see instead will be a huge, commercial-type building with a parking lot across the front. This type of development is not consistent with the one-story homes on Vista Drive. In conclusion, if the words rural and preservation have any real meaning, then I ask you to turn down this proposal. While such a building might be appropriate in another location, it does not conform to the idea of rural, nor does it preserve, in fact, just the opposite. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you give your name and address?
Iris Sally. I live at fourteen seventy-three Teddington Court, Unit one oh two. It's off of Harville, between Charleston and Oke, across the street from the Harville side of the Chabad. I bought the house there, the townhouse there recently. My son attends the Chabad school. I bought the house or the townhouse with the intention of being close to the school and to the synagogue, but I grew up in a rural community where schools are part of the community. They're not outside of the community. My older kids, they went to school within the community. It wasn't somewhere outside of it. Whether it's public school, private school, whatever it is, it's always integrated into the community. I don't see why any school should be expected to be somewhere off in an industrial area or something. It was my understanding when I moved that my son would attend the school in his neighborhood. Granted, we chose this school, but having older children, I have my reasons why I want him to attend a Jewish private day school. And I can tell you that it would definitely affect my decision to remain a resident of the city if it wasn't approved. It would definitely shatter my hopes as far as staying and growing some roots in that area. I downsized from a big house to live in that neighborhood because the school would be integrated into it. So I don't really understand the mentality or the point of view of it doesn't conform. Most schools don't exactly conform. If you look at any of the schools in the district, they don't look like the houses. They don't look like the houses in Spanish Trails or any place else. They look like a school, as they should, and that's...
So you're in favor?
I'm very much in favor, yes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Would you give your name and address for record?
Good evening. I'm Sari. Twelve thirty-six Vista Drive. I live right now with my mother, who this property is adjacent to the proposal site. And I need... This project, as proposed, envisions a two-story, seventy-eight thousand square-foot building set back from Vista Drive with accommodation for eighty-five parking spaces, which are accessed by automobiles entering Vista Drive from both directions. This is not in concert with the classification of this neighborhood, which has been repeatedly zoned primarily residential for the thirty years that my mom and I and the rest of the family have occupied this residence. The design and the main... The design of the main building, as proposed, clearly places an obstruction which is above and beyond the line of sight, which is now present as from the one-story homes which are on either side of Vista Drive. The advent of the two-story building, which is of this magnitude, is undoubtedly quadrupled the traffic flow to this constricted area, which is presently exist... I'm sorry, exists on Vista Drive between Charleston and Delray Street. If the approval is going to be given for the construction of this building on this site, it would appear more feasible for the building to be on a one-story basis, which would be in keeping with the structural designs of the homes which already exist. This not only will... This will not only diminish the traffic density and be more in keeping with more acceptable-sized buildings on the limited area, which is, you know, where this is proposed. Based on the factors stated above, I recommend that this committee that approval be given, not only for the one-story building to be constructed on this site. Thank you.
Okay, so you're saying...
I babbled.
You're against the two-story, but you're in favor if it's one-story?
If it... Yeah, it's coming. You know what I mean?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your name and address?
My name is Shari Pitterman, and I live at forty-two oh one Mountain View Boulevard. I would like you to consider the future. I would like you to consider that, yes, it's sort of rural there, but in the future, this area will be built up. Land will be finite in the valley. The area has to grow. The vacant lots that are across the street will one day be developed. Flyers Gym is already two stories high. The city will grow up, not out. Two stories, in my opinion, is underbuilding it. If I had my way, I'd build it three stories with apartment buildings on top. If you think about it, sir, New York does that. Chicago does that. Many major cities in the world do that because land is finite. Please approve this, and if it doesn't get approved now, five years from now, it will have seemed foolish. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If you want to speak, come on forward, please. Or anyone else? Come on down.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Thomas J. McGrath, and we have resided at fourteen thirteen Vista Drive for approximately eighteen years. We lived directly across from the proposed project. We love our house and our neighborhood. You have seen our neighborhood testifying in front of you numerous times regarding zoning variances, payday loans, additional churches, and other issues regarding our proud Artesian Heights neighborhood. This is a special neighborhood, and we are designated as being protected by the Rural Neighborhood Preservation Act. As a neighborhood, we have been collectively meeting with Rabbi Shia Harlig and Howard Perelman for well over a year. Howard has revised his plan several times. He is a superb and gifted architect. We all know this. However, there is not one single neighbor who borders this project who wants this in our neighborhood. It is incompatible. Parents speed down our residential street every afternoon to pick up their children. We are unanimous in our opposition of this very worthwhile project, but it is much too ambitious for our neighborhood, and the traffic congestion would be four times as great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. If you want to speak, please come forward. Otherwise, I'm going to end the public hearing after the...
My name is Kevin Oswald, and I've lived in that neighborhood for twenty years, but I run a business on West Charleston and actually grew up there for forty-five years.
What's your address?
Four zero two nine Mountain View Boulevard, One Street East. And change happens. I know that this... I mean, I've seen it for a long time. They bought the property next to the church. That gives them some more room. First Walmart moved into our area. That caused chaos with traffic up and down the street. This is a beautiful building, and the project probably should go on, but I don't want to see anything two stories in our area. I disagree. In my opinion, this project's much too large and incompatible. It belongs on Harville, not Vista.
Thank you. Did you wish to speak? No? Okay. Seeing no one else, I'll close the public hearing and ask the applicant to respond or if they wish to respond.
Very briefly. First of all, we're not talking about putting a new school in the area. The school's already there. It's been there for years. We're merely talking about expanding the school to handle existing students. Secondly, we did hear the plea of the neighbors. As the first speaker said, it was eighty-four thousand square feet when we first started. There were waivers. Howard and Rabbi working with the neighbors, we reduced the size of the building. We changed our plan not to need any waivers at all. The traffic concern, we've already agreed to that we're going to do a traffic study. Whatever the traffic study says, we're going to do. We spoke to some of the neighbors. They want speed bumps. Some wanted it, some didn't want it. So we're going to do a traffic study, and we'll abide by whatever the decisions are of the traffic study. I want to point out also that there are several other two-story, I'm told, houses in the neighborhood. Lastly, I want to point out that the properties to the north and west of our location are commercial, so we believe that besides that we're already there, we are compatible with the neighborhood. With that, we'll answer any questions.
I'm sorry, are we done?
Done.
I was pointing out a two-story building. Mr. Lewis, you wanted to discuss some of these?
Let me add one thing if I have on that point. I know Mr. Lewis is going to explain it, I'm sure. Some of these things are difficult to enforce, but we wanted to make, at least in good faith, a point of the record. So we're going to be in this community, and we want the neighbors and this board and the city council to be able to hold us to task if we don't follow it, and that's why we wanted to make that, okay?
Thank you. Mr. Lewis?
Yeah, to be very brief. Mr. Brown kind of took the words out of his mouth. Actually, number one, two, and three already are a part of our design guidelines, as I understand them. Is that someone's for planning?
That is correct.
So I'm not sure that we need to reinforce that with these extra conditions. Four and five, I think you have honorable gentlemen in front of you telling you on the record that the applicant will require their teaching staff to park in the Arville Street parking lot, and they're going to discourage parking on Vista Drive. I'm not sure those are appropriate for land use application. And number six, here's the issue with number six. This says there will not be a high school located in the Desert Torah Academy. What this attempts to do is limit the availability of a permit... The construction of a permitted use by right in this area. Now, the law does permit a person to waive a legal right. The person in this case is Chabad Southern Nevada Inc., and so if, in fact, we're going to put number six as a condition, I would ask that the Rabbi come up, tell us who he is, tell us that he's got the authority on behalf of Chabad Southern Nevada Inc. to waive this legal right to build a high school on this site. And if he can do so, then I would recommend to you that you do place this as a condition if you were to approve it.
Now, you said build, but I'm reading this that they're saying that they won't use this new building to expand and not build another building, but use the building that would be there after this.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. Is the Rabbi here?
Yes, he is.
My name is Rabbi Shia Harlig. I'm the director of Chabad of Southern Nevada. The Desert Torah Academy is part of our organization. I know one of the concerns of the neighbor was that eventually we'll have a high school there, and they're worried about teenagers coming in with cars, and I made my commitment to them that we will not have a high school on that property. So myself, Rabbi Shia Harlig, on behalf of Chabad of Southern Nevada, means that we will not put a high school on the property of the Desert Torah Academy, these three acres. Just one point. I know there's about an issue with the traffic in the coming. Currently, our pickup and drop-off is on Vista Drive, so we're doing it there. We've been there for twelve years. And as we mentioned, once we move our synagogue to the other side, I think we're going to mitigate traffic, not increase traffic. Thank you.
That was one question I had, that with the synagogue on the other side, and it doesn't appear, is there to be ample parking on Saturday or Sunday, whichever?
We don't drive on Saturday, so people walk in the neighborhood. Our services are before school starts, seven in the morning, and our afternoon services are after school, so it's no conflict.
Thank you. But we're now going to go down Arville.
Mr. Chairman, staff would like to make a point of clarification regarding the staff report. The staff report indicated that it's not in the rural preservation neighborhood. It is in the rural neighborhood preservation area as defined by Title nineteen. However, staff still supports the use as that is a permitted use within the RE zone.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis?
Chairman, thank you very much. That was certainly satisfactory as a waiver of their legal right to either operate or construct a high school upon this site. And so if you're going to make a motion to approve, then certainly, please feel free to add number six as an additional condition.
Okay, and then we would ask Mr. Brown to work with you before city council, or would he work with the director?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, once the condition is placed, we're okay. We don't need additional documentation.
Thank you. One question that was asked was, is there going to be a community center, or is there going to be activities for the local area?
I believe the answer is no. Private school, and we're not going to.
Okay.
Chairman, if I may, Public Works?
Yes.
If condition number one that was submitted by the applicant is being considered for adoption if the item is approved tonight, I'd like to ask, for my own benefit, what would be the purpose of the gates? What is the intent? I'm sorry?
Mr. Lewis, in our discussions, number one is not necessary.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I may. Because it is my understanding that conditions one, two, and three would be covered by our current design guidelines, I am suggesting that we do not add one, two, or three if there is a motion for approval. If Public Works believes that this is an addition to our code and would be an improvement for public safety, then let's discuss that as we go on.
Well, I just wanted to understand what they were trying to accomplish by that. But if it's not going to be included, I don't need to know.
Just because I don't want him to go away wondering. My understanding from this point is that the neighbors had asked that there be a fence there, so it wouldn't be vandalism or graffiti inside showing on that street, and we were doing that as an accommodation. That's my understanding, Mr. Perelman.
Okay, well, Chairman, so what they said tonight is we're going to make this accommodation, which is number one, but it's not something that you need to place on the SDR as a condition of approval.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other questions from the Commissioners? Commissioner, if you could?
No real questions. I'd like to have a comment, and then if there are no other discussions, I'd like to make a motion. My comments are that I think the applicant has shown good faith in working with the neighbors in this area for the last year. They've shown good faith in making concessions in numerous areas, including the size of the structure, reducing it by approximately fifteen percent, and acknowledgement that the grades will only go up to the eighth grade, so you'll not have any young drivers up and down the area. I think with the addition of the, what would be the twenty-first condition referencing not a high school located at the Desert Torah Academy, I'm ready to make a motion if there's no other discussion.
We have a couple of questions. Commissioner, why?
I just wanted to make mention, somebody mentioned there was two pages of opposition or signatures, but in the backup notes, there's approximately five approvals and one opposition, and those come from folks that live pretty close to that. So with that, it shows me that there's some support in the neighborhood for this project, and I just think a school in a neighborhood goes together, and I think the young lady that spoke well about her child being there summed it up, and so I have nothing but support for the project.
I'd like to make a couple of comments. First, I want to apologize to Mr. Mulhall because I didn't get back to you today. I was being a capitalist and was busy, so I apologize for not calling you back. And I have supported this area quite, you know, for the building and the rural areas...
there, but I'm looking at this, I got to say that I think this is a good thing for the area. They've done a tremendous job in trying to accommodate you. They've gone in with all the landscaping and it looks like they're going extra landscaping, the rod fences. I do agree with the one lady that that's not a reason to vote for it, that sooner or later, it's going to develop into that area. And I know those vacant lots down there on the corner, when they wanted to divide that into five lots, I thought that was making it too small. But I do think, and this school is already there, I don't, I think this will increase their attendance. Obviously, that's why they're doing it, but this will see my support at this time.
Commissioner Trobridge?
I'm ready to make a motion in regards to item number seventeen, which would be Site Development Review eighteen, three forty-two, in support of the staff recommendation for approval of the request, subject to the all conditions listed, plus the addition of condition twenty-one, which would be, there will be not be a high school located at the Desert Torah Academy.
And does the applicant agree with these conditions?
Yes.
And we have a motion for approval of item number seventeen. Please vote. Post?
Thank you very much.
Motion carries.
And that will go forward to council on December fifth.
Moving on to item eighteen. Applicant owner Debbie and Joe Honrock to allow a two-foot separation between a proposed detached accessory structure and the primary dwelling where a six-foot minimum separation is required at one-one-two-one-eight Blunk Vineyard Court. Staff?
Staff finds no hardship associated with this application and recommends denial.
Thank you. Name and address?
Good evening, Jessica Lane, Matthew Lane, Proficient Patios, two-sixteen South Seventh Street, Suite Twenty. We are the hired contractors for the structure. Can you actually see the picture that I put down here?
We can.
All right. First off, I just wanted to start off in saying, we are asking for a ten-by-nineteen solid freestanding aluminum wood patio cover, as you can see on the corner of the house and the lot, northeast corner. It is going to be stucco and tile edge to aesthetically match the residence that's there now. And we are asking, you would need a six-foot setback, and we're asking for a two-foot setback. Could you point, Matt, from the corner of the house to the corner of the, to the overhang of the patio? And a three-foot setback from the corner to the post. So, there's a one-foot overhang, as you can see right on that corner. And our reason for asking for setback reduction is, as you can see, we have a very limited amount of space in the backyard. We're trying to get the most patio shaded area, which is moving us to that cornered area. And with the pool, we don't really have much space. What I'm, we're trying to obey by the five-foot setback that Summerlin requires on the top to the rear, rear block wall. So, by doing that, it's making me move the patio cover forward, giving me only a two-foot setback from the corner to the corner of the patio. I also wanted to add that Summerlin did approve the structure as long as we're able to pull a building permit on it. And another thing I got to, just in case, because I saw on the Internet agenda, we only have two approvals and two opposing, and we have another two that we just received. So, that makes four approvals and two opposing, yeah.
Do you have that letter from Summerlin? Or is it in our packet?
It should have been in your packet. I submitted it with the variance packet. Their conditions, I just read it, I think it was on the Internet, wasn't it, today? Well, their conditions, I know, was a five-foot, as long as we have a five-foot rear setback and a five-foot to the side, which should, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I see a note, note that was, yeah, this is in August, that Summerlin approved it with the condition of construction of a freestanding patio cover.
Correct.
And do you have letters from your, well, wait a minute?
I'm sorry?
Is that, I was interrupting you, go ahead.
No, no, no. I was just showing a picture up there. As you can see, that's the corner that we're trying to fill in. Maybe this one, this one shows more the corner of the house, Matt, point the corner of the house, to where the corner of the patio is going, maybe.
So, your back property line is to a street, it looks like?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, and then the side is to?
The side is to a street as well.
Oh, they're both to streets?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Let me put the plot now. To the side, as you see, we have a brick wall, and that's not our property line. So, then we have, I believe it's what, fifteen feet to the property line? So, it's landscaping right next to it, and then we have our property line.
Okay. I'm, this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and ask the commission, if they have any questions?
Yes.
Commissioner?
I'm familiar with this project. The Summerlin Homeowners Association, who aren't particularly known as being lenient, have recommended approval for this project subject to two conditions. The one being that the freestanding patio cover must match the existing house. The drawings and the photographs that I've seen of the proposal shows that they do in fact meet that requirement. The second one was at the minimum setback of five feet from all property lines. I had originally questioned it and found out that their eastern property line really is fifteen feet because they've got on the other side of the wall, which is their property, there's a very large landscape buffer between their property line and the street. And so, that meets the second requirement of the Summerlin HOA. I think we're all familiar with the lumina lattice style of construction, and it certainly doesn't constitute a fire hazard at all, nor does the tile roof. And so, if there's no other discussion, I'm willing to make a motion and get this thing going.
Go for it.
Okay. In regards to item number eighteen, the SCD twenty-four-seven-thirty-three, I'd make a recommendation for approval, subject to all staff conditions.
We have a motion for approval of item eighteen. Please vote. Post?
Thank you.
And motion carries.
And that is final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days to the city clerk's office.
Item nineteen, VAR two-four-seven-seven-four. Now, we'll move on to twenty-three. VAR two-four-seven-seven-six, applicant owner George and Carleen Kampa to allow a proposed two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifteen-square-foot detached accessory structure, class-two garage, where thirteen-hundred-and-thirty-four-square-foot is the maximum allowed at sixty-seven-hundred Buckskin Avenue. Staff?
Staff finds no hardship associated with this application and recommends denial.
Thank you. Applicant?
George Kanapa, sixty-seven-hundred Buckskin.
Okay. Did you want to make a comment, or?
Jim Schilling, sixty-eighty Genet Street, Schilling General Contractors. What we've basically tried to do for George is provide him with RV parking and a pool cabana to enjoy his pool. Basically, also a place to protect his RV. Right now, it's sitting on the side of his house in the sun, along with some other toys he has there. All the architecture that was designed for this structure matches the home. It's got tile roof, a stucco finish on it. Paint will match the home. It'll be newer, it'll accent the neighborhood. Basically, George has talked to the neighbors, and I'll let him talk on that, and they're in favor of that. It'll be nicer than leaving everything outside on the side of the house there. So, we've done our best to design it to match the home and accent the neighborhood there. Here's another picture of the design.
Do you want me to turn it, or you turn? Thank you.
Did you see the overview of the layout, or do I need to put that on? Basically, it meets all property lines, the setbacks, everything like that. We're just over on our square footage.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and ask the commission for their wishes? Nobody wishes?
Yeah.
Oh, Commissioner Steinman?
Yeah, I think that this building will be a very different mass in the neighborhood. I couldn't find any other mass of this size. And in fact, the lots on Rocking Horse Avenue behind this are very small lots compared to the lots on Buckskin. And I think this mass is going to be quite an intrusion in those backyards on that side. I understand the idea of, let's get things inside and let's get them covered up, but there is a reason why we only allow thirteen-hundred-and-thirty-four square feet and not double that. And what you're putting on there is really another house. And I don't think this lot can withstand another house at this time, so I can't support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there a motion? Did you wish to?
Can I respond to that?
Yes.
Currently, right now, if you drive through that neighborhood, there's lean-to tin structures in yards. Now, we can very well put that, you know, right next door, George, correct? There's a, there's a lean-to, basically a metal building in a yard.
On Rocking Horse, just as you described.
Yeah, and what I'm trying to do, I could go in and match the square footage and put a, you know, lean-to tin building there. It's not going to look nice, you know? I'm trying to, you know, George is trying to create something nice for the neighborhood. If we downsize it, yeah, we'll spend a lot less money, and we won't go through it, through with it. We'll put a steel structure in and save the money. It's not going to look as nice, though.
But I think this building is so large that it comes all the way to the front of the existing structure.
No, to the back. That building is completely in the back of his house.
Oh, I understand, but it doesn't come out the front yard. I understand that. But I didn't find anybody, anybody else that's built anything of that size, and I think it's an intrusion into that neighborhood to build a, another house. Actually, it looks like it's bigger than the regular house.
No, it's.
On there, but it's very close. It's odd. So, you're going to have two houses, two structures of the same size on that particular lot. And it's just, it's just wrong to do that in that neighborhood. That's a very fine neighborhood through there.
Now, planning, I could connect with a breezeway and it'd be completely legal, correct?
If I may, they would have to have internal access, not a breezeway.
And speaking of your reservations, Commissioner Steinman, our neighbors to the rear of us on Rocking Horse, we've been in this home for over fifteen, sixteen, well, actually since the home was built. And all of the neighbors that we've discussed this with are glad to see and really are looking forward to seeing this put there because right now, we do have a travel trailer we will vote.
I saw, yes.
We have a lot of toys that are now stored on our garage, I mean, on our patio, and they're all for it. They've all actually called us and voiced their opinion that, you know, this is going to be nice, and it will be nice structure. And it's not just the garage. We're also, as you explained, a cabana for our pool, where we have a rather large pool in the backyard as well.
Do you know a John Markin?
No, sir, I don't.
Okay. In our backup, we had one opposition in writing, and it was a John Markin, but it was a P.O. Box. So, no telling what the address was, so.
I've never heard of the name of the truck.
Thank you.
I'm trying to read the drawing here. Could you tell me how far your setbacks are with the proposed structure from your north and your east walls?
Can I put this other drawing up, please? Our setbacks are five feet on each side from the property line.
And that's what code requires?
Yeah, and then we've got six feet to the house there. The code, five feet from the side, the required setback for the side near, for the side and rear is actually three feet, right? Pardon me? The side and rear setback required is actually three feet, right?
Yes.
So, you're meeting the side and the rear setback?
We're meeting the side and rear setback. We're actually meeting it plus two feet. We're also meeting the setback to the house. It's ten inches beyond the required six-foot setback from the primary dwelling. We're meeting all the setbacks.
Now, you said that, or did I read in the file, that part of this is going to be a covered patio?
It's a cabana, like a game room for the pool.
So, it is going to be enclosed?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
That's why, one reason the structure is so large, rather than, as you referenced, my husband originally wanted to put up a steel garage, and then we were going to build a game room or a cabana area. But because of the area, we thought we could just incorporate it into one, and that's why the square footage is excessive.
Right.
So, well, I have to confess that you don't have anything in writing from your neighbors, but I'm going to take it on good faith that what you're telling us is correct, and I actually think that I could support this motion tonight, so.
Was that a motion?
It has to be, unless somebody else wants to step up the plate and school me.
We have a motion for approval of item number twenty-three. Please vote. Motion carries.
And that is final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days to this office of the city clerk. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to take one more, and then we will take a short break. Item twenty-four, SUP two-four-seven-two-three, applicant Joan Bakhtari, owner, boy, they're just after me tonight. Schur's LLC for a proposed delivery and service vehicle storage at nine-hundred Stewart Avenue. Staff?
Staff finds the location to be compatible with strounding properties and recommends approval if the parking lot is screened and landscaped as required by the zoning code.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners Greg Borghel, three-hundred South Fourth Street, representing the applicant and owner here. We've received and reviewed the staff conditions and agree with them, and would ask for your favorable action.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward.
Stephen Smith, I'm the pastor at nine-oh-one East Ogden Avenue, which is, our property line's about one-hundred feet from their property line. I spoke with the owner's representative today, and they said that they were withdrawing this application. So, I'm a little surprised that it wasn't withdrawn, but we only have one issue, and that the previous people that were on the property, which I think it's the same people that are wanting to put ice cream trucks on this property, cut the alleyway, and we're bootlegging the electricity, and I'd like them to fix the alleyway.
I'm not sure I understood the point about fixing the alleyway. Are you saying they shouldn't take access to it, or what? And then there was an electrical question, what, I didn't, there seemed to be three points there, and I don't understand.
I think he was saying they cut the blacktop?
Well, they cut the blacktop and the, where the water runs, the gully, which is concrete. And, you know, it's, my wife's car got damaged, and I'd just like them to fix it.
Mr. Bakhtari was not the original property owner here, and to the best of my knowledge, had nothing to do with that. However, I will check that out between now and city council, and obviously, if the property's been damaged as a result of his actions, or if the public property's been damaged as a result of his actions, he should in fact fix it.
Okay.
Okay. I don't think it was the doctor that tore up the alley, it's, but I think it's the same tenant that wants to go on this property that damaged the alleyway.
Right. Mr. Anderson, if that was damaged, wouldn't we require somebody, the property owner, to fix it? Or, I'm just asking. Or maybe Mr. Lewis, or?
You know, I would certainly expect that if we, you know, I'll have our people go out and look at the alley and see what the damage is. This is the first I've heard of this. And normally, on a special use permit, I'm somewhat limited in what I can do with respect to public improvements.
Yeah.
But we will definitely send out people to look, and if we find that the tenant has been doing something naughty, we will see if code enforcement can.
Yeah, or if that's our public alleyway, we just need somebody to report it. So, now it's been reported, so.
Well, I have already reported it some time ago to Councilman Barlow's office, and his representative did come out, but I never heard back what, what was the result.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Lewis?
If I may, yeah, we just need to, we just need to follow up, and if it's public street that's in disrepair, I'm sure that our Public Works folks will take a look at it, and if we can prove that somebody that's not part of the city damaged our property, then we might have a conversation with them.
Okay. We'll try.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, I'll close the public hearing and ask the commission their wishes. Mr. Truesdale?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman. To the applicant, when you say vehicle storage and operations, what type of vehicles are going to be here, comings and goings, and what can we expect of those vehicles?
Dr. Bakhtari perceives a need in the downtown area for what I'll call fleet storage, and he has in mind, and I'm not certainly claiming there's any firm arrangement, somebody like the telephone company has a fleet of trucks that they, from time to time, have located in the city, apparently without benefit of a use permit like this, from which they dispatch people. The city of Las Vegas has a fleet of vehicles that they dispatch, and there are a number of businesses downtown who could use this as a, call it a fleet dispatching area, a vehicle storage and dispersal point, if you will. And now, he doesn't have a contract with anyone, to my knowledge.
And in, in that regard, I, I think the use is appropriate. Obviously, it's a parking lot, and the improvements will be dealt with up to the standard. What I would like to see is a condition of the use permit is that the applicant provide a trash receptacle enclosure as part of this, because what I've found is most of the, the contract vehicles, what, almost name any business, generate a significant amount of trash, and usually what happens, it burdens every other paying trash customer in, in the general area of it. We, we see numerous projects that we were involved with. I think I'm the ultimate trash point on the strip for every limo that wants to clean out in the morning. But, and I, I think that's really what-
And we think-
-what would happen here. And I, I really believe if we're going to have this use, that's a condition that I would like to see put on there.
And I don't see why that would be effectable, Commissioner.
Was that a motion there?
Yeah, I mean, I would make a motion to follow staff's recommendations with the additional condition that the applicant would install appropriate trash, and I don't know if it's an enclosure and receptacle for public disposal.
Would that be, I'm looking to Mr. Rankin, standard?
Yeah, per title nineteen oh eight.
Yes.
And you're in agreement?
I, well, of course, this is news, and the developer isn't here, but I'm agreeing to, you can put that condition on. I'll take it to the developer. We'll have a, what I'm sure will be an affirmative response by city council.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion for approval of item number twenty-four. Please vote. And motion carries.
Thank you very much.
I'm, I'm going to take Mr. Borghel's recommendation, that he's going to talk to his client about the meeting that condition.
No, I, what I said was, we'll agree that you could put it on, and hopefully, we will get something from someone more responsible than me prior to city council. It seems reasonable to me.
And that would be city council on December fifth.
Thank you. Thank you, and we're going to take a ten-minute break now to allow everyone to relax.
He deals with it all the time. Is number eleven done?
Yeah. You're subject to condition. Yeah, so when he said, like, he said items eight, eleven, and twelve, we're starting to do it. Let me check my records.
That's what I'm sure it'll be.
Yeah.
You're very welcome. You're very welcome.
Do I need to come back?
I see.
You want me just to stand right back here?
That's good.
You want me just to stand right back here?
That's good.
It's fine.
It's made of, huh?
It's made of, huh?
It's made of, huh?
Was that a motion there?
Yeah, I mean, I would make a motion to follow staff's recommendations with the additional condition that the applicant would install appropriate trash, and I don't know if it's an enclosure and receptacle for public disposal.
Would that be, I'm looking to Mr. Rankin, standard?
I, well, of course, this is news, and the developer isn't here, but I'm agreeing to, you can put that condition on. We'll have a, what I'm sure will be an affirmative response by city council.
We have a motion for approval of item number twenty-four.
I'm going to take Mr. Borghel's recommendation, that he's going to talk to his client about
What I said was, we'll agree that you could put it on, and hopefully, we will get something from someone more responsible than me prior to city council.
And that would be city council on December fifth.
We're going to call the item back to order, and we'll skip number twenty-five and...
I'm number twenty-six. You get me, you gotta skip me.
Okay. Item number twenty-five, S.U.P., are we back? There we are. S.U.P., one, two, three, which one? Yeah. Two four seven eight zero, applicant Nevada Partnership for Homeless Youth, owner, University Board of Regents for a proposed social service provider at eight one eight East Sahara Avenue. Staff?
Staff finds this request is not compatible with surrounding properties and recommends denial.
Thank you. We, we got confused. I was told it was on Maryland Parkway, your secretary.
The existing location is on Maryland Parkway.
Okay. Sorry, I missed you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. I'm Mark Fiorentino. I am on the board of the Nevada Partnership for Homeless Youth. I'm here tonight representing the organization on the two applications that are in front of you. Actually, number twenty-six is related. I'm not sure if you read that in the record or not. I wasn't paying attention.
Can, they, they don't have it marked as related. Can we, Ms., Ms. Wheeler, can we open twenty-five and twenty-six? He says they're related.
Separate talks.
Okay. Can't do that.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm going to talk about them together, but obviously, we can answer any questions however you want to approach it. The partnership is a nonprofit organization that provides services and assistance to kids ages twelve to seventeen. One of the things I passed out to you is a list of services that they provide. Rather than go through the list, I think it's more important to indicate what they don't do, and a lot of this is detailed in your staff report. There is no onsite preparation of food, there is no onsite shelter or sleeping accommodations, and there's no onsite provision of any medical services. Primarily, they're providing referral services, a safe place for kids to do certain activities to pick up some of their daily, daily needs and so forth. You can get vouchers for food. All of that is detailed in, in what I passed out to you in the list of their services. The, the partnership has existing operations on South Maryland Parkway in the county in some leased premises right across the street from UNLV. What you have before you tonight is two different locations, two different sites, but they're in close proximity to each other, and they're related, so I would like to talk to them about together. The organization is currently undergoing a capital campaign to purchase two buildings from the university system, and I want to talk to you about them separately. The first one on your agenda is the one I'm pointing to now, which is eight eighteen East Sahara. This is a vacant building. Both of these two buildings were previously occupied by the university dental school. They're both vacant. They have been vacant for some time. The first location is smaller, and the long-range plan for that building is to house the administrative functions of the organization. In the short term, however, and the reason it has a use permit in front of you is to do the drop-in services, the ones that I sent you the list on and we just talked about, in that building because it's immediately occupiable. So we want to move from our current location, and, and that gives us the ability to save about forty thousand dollars a year in rent to operate temporarily from the eight eighteen building. The second site, which is the next item on your agenda, the eight sixty-four building, you can see they're all part of the same general commercial project, is where the permanent drop-in center will be. But that building is going to require some renovations and some work. So the plan is, when that building is complete, and we currently estimate that will take about twelve to eighteen months, the first building will become only administrative offices, and all of the drop-in services will be moved to the second building. We're going to make a substantial improvement in these buildings. This is a picture of the second building here. We currently estimate it's about a one point three million dollar project total, and that includes both the acquisition costs and the renovation costs. So that's what the building looks like now. And this is what it will look like when the renovations are complete. So as you can see, we're, we're talking about making substantial improvements to the building. We've been very successful, frankly, I'm proud to say, in the early stages of the capital campaign. There have been many, many community leaders who have already contributed to that campaign. We've raised over three hundred thousand dollars already towards the project. The, the list is too long to name everybody, but so you know, and I say this to give you an indication of the seriousness and the, and the time and effort that are going to go into the project. The current donors include the Reynolds Foundation, MGM Mirage, Citibank, Bank of America, the Ritter Charitable Trust, Regent Sicilac, Commissioner Woodbury, the Herbst family, Chancellor Jim Rogers, and Sunbelt Communications, and Paula Francis are all existing people who have already contributed to the capital campaign to get this project going. The second thing I submitted to you were some letters of support. You have a letter from the current landowner-
One, I was referred a call today from Commissioner Evans, from Bob Bellis. I notice his signature isn't on here, but he wanted me, he wasn't able to be here tonight.
He's here.
Oh, he did make it, okay. Good deal.
We flew him in from the French Riviera.
And the other part of this is unfortunately, I do own, or not own, I do handle a listing of a property within the notice area, so it would be inappropriate for me to vote on this matter.
Thank you. Name and address?
Good evening. I'm Penelope Hardy. I live at 828 Alhambur Drive, Las Vegas, Nevada. I live in the single-family dwelling residential neighborhood just north of the proposed area. And in listening to the explanation of the business coming in, it seems to focus on a lot of the businesses of, well, Commercial Center, Tower of Jewels. These are people who don't live in the neighborhood, and at any time, they could relocate a business. Our neighborhood is some 50 years old, having been established in the early 1960s, and I've lived in the same house for some 27 years. I've seen very few changes go on, unless they're so quiet and so settled that they just don't draw attention. The people visiting this center, this referral center, are 18-year-olds, or rather teenagers, but I was told 13 to 18. These are described as the non-traditional homeless youth. These are children who do come from families that have homes and establish links to this community. Now, these referral services are to get these children to stop couch-hopping, as I've been told, and to find a place where they can nestle down. But if you take a look at the routine of teenagers, and you've only to look at the national news or even the local news to know that teenagers will take access by whatever route they can to get to whatever they're trying to get to. Now, the big primary concern here is the path of access. We're talking about putting a burden on a neighborhood that can't sustain something. The only real access to this proposed site is from the south, from Sahara Avenue, because from the north, there is a single-family dwelling neighborhood of single-family houses. And from the east, there is a string of buildings which you can't get through. And from the west, the same thing happens. I think there may be one opening up towards Sahara. But the objective thing is, it puts a burden on the existing neighborhood and the commercial dealers, which are income-producing properties, to put young teenagers there, 12 to 17 or 13 to 18, on their own, many of whom may not have cars, many of whom come from the north to get to the site.
Go ahead.
I'm concerned, you know, you mentioned the word earlier tonight, burdens on neighborhoods, creating accesses where there are not normal paths, and it's natural that they would tear down walls and fences, and they have done that. And I'm concerned that when teenagers get bus tokens and granola bars, it becomes a social setting for them to gather. If you've ever tried feeding one bird, you know by the next morning, you have a whole flock there. And this is not a necessity for them to return home. It's gonna be a social gathering place at the expense of an old, old neighborhood and some private property.
Okay, thank you. You name an address for the record?
Pardon me. Jeff Long, 1000 East St. Louis Avenue, associate pastor at Trinity Life Center, also representing 950 East Sahara Avenue. I'd just like to speak in favor of this idea, this project. I just think it'd be a great opportunity to help people. I think we need to bring solutions to help young people. I think young people get a negative rap at times, though deserving. At the flip side, we've all been teenagers, receiving help, and I just would like to offer our support and just believe it'd be a great project. We have medical clinics on our side, so I'd be wanting to help that can offer assistance for children in this bracket to help them get medical care. So I think it's a great opportunity. Just want to put that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I say something else? Here's my time up.
Your time's up.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Your name and address?
My name is Rob Hackett. I live at 828 Alhambur Drive, in the little area north, the residential area north, which is called Town and Country Estates. They're not estates, they're little track houses, but they're divided by a wall from this area where the commercial and professional people have built on Sahara Avenue where this place is proposed. The children already in the neighborhood are all we can handle to keep them from climbing that wall back and forth. It's very inviting to cut from the north, over the wall, through any of these cul-de-sacs. It's a very bad safety situation for kids to be back there and to add more kids to the mix, particularly kids who don't know the neighborhood. This idea is fantastic, there's no question, but that somebody's heart and their money is in the right place. It's just that their location to do this isn't in the right place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob Bellis, president of the John S. Park Neighborhood Association. I was also the program manager for Nevada Partnership for Homeless Youth for two years. As you guys know, a main concern of mine is always to keep the impact of the neighborhood as low as possible. Being the program manager for, I left about a year ago, but for two years as the program manager and actually helping build these programs, I can tell you that there's been no impact on the neighborhood where the location is now at 4800 Maryland Parkway. I don't think there would be any impact on the neighborhood or we would support it. I also met with the South Ridge Neighborhood Association. They had an official meeting where we met with that neighborhood association. I kind of did a presentation, showed them what the program is, how it works, and they were overwhelmingly for this. So I just wanted to leave that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Todd Farley, 240 North Lane, 8th Street. These kids need someplace to go. Commissioner Goins and Margot, I want you to go back six, seven years. Think back. Is this the same outfit that was gonna put a deal for homeless youth on Main Street by Ferris Automotive and Carson Electric around in there? Do you remember that back then? Is this the same bunch?
He can't remember breakfast.
I don't believe it to be. Maybe better suited to ask Ms. Boytland.
Whatever happened to that project? I was just wondering, is this the same project? Did they move?
Where at? Where were you saying?
Down on Main Street by Ferris Automotive, just north of Ferris Automotive, across from Carson Electric.
Did it ever go in?
Well, that's what...
I don't remember.
I don't think that was this organization.
This is not, okay.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and ask the applicant if they wish to comment.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you very much. Yes, I think just very briefly, I'm not sure I completely understood the concerns, but I also don't think I completely understood, I completely explained some of the improvements that we're making. As the folks who lived here spoke, we cannot take any access to their neighborhood unless people are literally trespassing through the yards and hopping over the wall in one direction or another, because there is already an existing block wall here. This whole project only takes access off Sahara. We are actually working to improve that as well. This is the permanent drop-in center, and I showed you only the exterior improvements to the building. But one of the other things we're gonna do is build another block wall around the drop-in center and put in a substantial amount of landscaping and so forth. So for a client who wanted to use this service to end up in their neighborhood, they're gonna have to go either out and around or over two block walls to get into that neighborhood. And I'm just not sure that that is a concern that they should be worried about. However, I will take the time, if these folks are interested after tonight, and take them over to the existing center that we have on Maryland Parkway, so that you can see for yourself exactly what services we're providing and the flow of traffic in and out. If they're interested, I'll get their name and number afterwards and make arrangements to do that if they'd like to do it. I think they'll feel much more comfortable if they actually take the time to do that.
Thank you.
I have a question. Since he came back, as he's with good ideas, does he have a chance to say something to it?
No, the public hearing is closed.
Oh, okay.
You only get one shot. He gets two.
Oh, he gets two?
Yeah. That's a democracy.
That's democracy, okay.
But you can get him on the way out. Thank you. Commissioner? Commissioner Goins?
Question.
Question?
Ready to go for motion?
I think they're going for motions.
I just wanted to comment from a social aspect. I know a couple of folks were mentioning the fact that they think these kids will be inundating the neighborhood, but I think it's just gonna be quite the reverse. At Veolia Transportation, where I work, we utilize this program out on our bus system. And one of the things we do is we work with safe places so that if kids are lost or run away or need to get to a safe place, they do board our buses, and we're trained to take them to nearest terrible herb stations, turn them over to the clerk, and then they make their way back to the organization. But this is a service that's well-needed in the neighborhood. I don't believe this is gonna create an environment where kids come to hang out. That's not the main goal of the organization. It's to care for the kids and get them self-sufficient. And I can tell you, there's a couple of success stories out of here that, I don't know, we don't have time to share them, but there are a couple of kids out of this program that actually gone on to college and actually one's playing football for UNLV. And so I think the purpose of this program, it's not a social club. It's a serious effort to change young people's life, and with that, I'll be able to support it wholeheartedly.
Is that a motion?
With that, I'll make a motion for approval of item 25, SUP 24780. Subject calls staff's recommendation and condition.
We have a motion for approval of item 25. Please vote. Post. Motion carries.
Item 26...
Nope. We gotta read it in. Item 26, SUP 24781, applicant Nevada Partnership for Homeless Youth Owner, University Board of Regents for a proposed social service provider at 864 East Sahara Avenue, and I'd ask the clerk to attach the comments made on number 25 to 26. And staff?
Staff finds this application is not compatible with surrounding properties and recommends denial.
Thank you. Did you, can we make a motion? Oh, this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Oh, you want another comment? Now you can make another comment.
It was number 26.
This is 26.
But it's a related item, so...
It's a related item. It's wonderful that so many financial supporters are willing...
Push the button. Your name and address.
Your name and address again.
Is that good?
No, it's all right. You're good.
Am I good?
You're good.
I'm Penelope Hardy, 828 Alhambur Drive, Las Vegas, Nevada, and I do live within close proximity to both proposed sites. They're only one street over from each other. It's wonderful there's so much financial support. I quite agree, and each of us contributes in our own way, but the people who contribute financially don't live there. They go home to their own neighborhoods. Children, teenagers, will make a social setting of wherever other teenagers gather for them. I've seen it happen. I've seen kids jump a wall. I've seen them jump into dumpsters. They don't have any regard. You mentioned words earlier tonight about what's enforceable and what's not enforceable. The noise level, cars that come down, their exhaust fumes, car doors opening or closing whenever they want to. And it isn't just the time of day that they'll be using the center. I want their success too, because this is my community, they're growing up in it, and I want them to grow up with front-door access to the best we can offer. But I also want a neighborhood that's safe for those of us who live here. Just the other night, I was confronted in my backyard by somebody who wanted to jump my wall, cross my property, to get back to the street where one of these proposed sites is. I can't help but think that if they want to go from where they are to where they need to get, they're gonna cross property, yours or mine. They can do it, but they can do it someplace else. And they're not gonna be told to stay away from the building. They're gonna gather outside. I'll meet you over there, I'll wait for you, I'll take you home. It will be a social gathering. If it weren't a social gathering, it would be missing its mark. I want their development too, but I also want to protect the years of developing a 50-year-old neighborhood that's one of the backbones of supporting the working industry in this town. There are families and children who live there. We pride ourselves, and if young people are known for carrying guns and doing drugs, I'm thinking about graffiti in the neighborhood. It's so easy to say that's a good place for it, and then go home to your home. I think you're right, Commissioner. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Vice Chairman, he's chair.
I couldn't see her. Okay. I'm lost, I think. It's wonderful, and I don't want to repeat myself. I just want, it's gonna be win-win. They can do it someplace else.
Now, if you're lost...
Am I lost?
I thought you said you were lost. I was gonna refer you to the organization.
I never said I was lost.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
I see we must be friends, right? He's a friend of yours, right?
No.
I'm not lost.
And I know you're saying that I go home at night, but my office is right there at 540 East St. Louis. So I mean, I'm in the area. And I think they're gonna be using the bus service on Sahara more for these people with the tokens and things.
If they don't, how is it enforceable?
In one year, this is set for a one-year review by city council.
There were two proposed sites. What did proposal 25 come up with?
They're both the same thing. They both have a one-year review at city council or planning. Yeah, I saw it in the one.
You know, you mentioned the neighborhood association. I never got a letter from the neighborhood association even telling me anything about this. Not at all. So the Beverly Association's supposed to tell me?
But I think what may serve you, ma'am, is between now and if this item is approved, I would ask you to consider the invitation of Mr. Fiorentino to actually go up to the office on South Maryland Parkway, and he will be able to walk you through and show you exactly how this program works. And I think you will probably find...
He explained it beautifully.
But I think there's nothing better than going to see it. I actually went up earlier this week and toured myself. Took me about an hour, and I was able to come away gratified that this would be a success at this site.
I will also say, he commented that he was on the board, and I think if you have these problems arise, he would have no problems with you calling him and just letting him know what's going on down there.
Well, the real issue is, no matter whether he's on the board or not, I'm talking about the children themselves, the use of the land, the surrounding land, the limited access to it. And they don't always come in through the main passage off of Main Sahara. They're gonna come in...
The noise level, cars that come down, their exhaust fumes, car doors opening or closing whenever they want to. And it isn't just the time of day that they'll be using the center. I want their success too because this is my community. They're growing up in it, and I want them to grow up with front door access to the best we can offer. But I also want a neighborhood that's safe for those of us who live here. Just the other night, I was confronted in my backyard by somebody who wanted to jump my wall, cross my property to get back to the street where one of these proposed sites is. I can't help but think that if they want to go from where they are to where they need to get, they're going to cross property, yours or mine. They can do it, but they can do it someplace else. And they're not going to be told to stay away from the building. They're going to gather outside. "I'll meet you over there. I'll wait for you. I'll take you home." It will be a social gathering. If it weren't a social gathering, it would be missing its mark. I want their development too, but I also want to protect the years of developing a 50-year-old neighborhood that's one of the backbones of supporting the working industry in this town. There are families and children who live there. We pride ourselves, and if young people are known for carrying guns and doing drugs, I'm thinking about graffiti in the neighborhood. It's so easy to say, "That's a good place for it," and then go home to your home. I think you're right, Commissioner. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Vice Chairman, he's chair.
I couldn't see her. Okay. I lost, I think. It's wonderful, and I don't want to repeat myself. I just want... it's going to be win-win. They can do it someplace else.
Now, if you're lost...
Am I lost?
I thought you said you were lost. I was going to refer you to the organization.
I have said I was lost.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
I see we must be friends, right? He's a friend of yours, right?
No.
I'm not lost.
And I know you're saying that I go home at night, but my office is right there at 540 East St. Louis. So I mean, I'm in the area. And I think they're going to be using the bus service on Sahara more for these people with the tokens and things.
If they don't, how is it enforceable?
In one year, this is set for a one-year review by City Council.
There were two proposed sites. What did the... what did Proposal 25 come up with?
They're both the same thing. They both have a one-year review at City Council or planning. Yeah, I saw it in the one.
You know, when you mentioned the neighborhood association, I never got a letter from the neighborhood association even telling me anything about this. Not at all. So the Beverly Association is supposed to tell me?
But I think what may serve you, ma'am, is between now and if this item is approved, I would ask you to consider the invitation of Mr. Fiorentino to actually go up to the office on South Maryland Parkway, and he will be able to walk you through and show you exactly how this program works. And I think you will probably find...
He explained it beautifully.
But I think there's nothing better than going to see it. I actually went up earlier this week and toured myself. Took me about an hour, and I was able to come away gratified that this would be a success at this site.
I will also say, he commented that he was on the board. And I think if you have these problems arise, he would have no problems with you calling him and just letting him know what's going on down there.
Well, the real issue is, no matter whether he's on the board or not, I'm talking about the children themselves, the use of the land, the surrounding land, the limited access to it. And they don't always come in through the main passage off of Main Sahara. They're going to come in wherever they can, and that's my primary concern, for their safety as well.
Okay. Thank you. I would like to add, I've been advised that we don't have that Condition 6 for the one-year review on Item 26. No, it's on 25. Would you be okay if we had that?
Well, actually, there was a reason you did it on 25 and not on 26. And that is because Item Number 25 is the temporary one. You want to make sure that it's operating correctly before we convert it into administrative offices. And to make sure we're actually doing the improvements on Item 26 that we promised that gives us the year to do it.
I knew 26 was going to take a year to be done, too.
Right. And we're leery of the condition on the permanent facility because first, you don't need it. You're going to have a year in the temporary facility to review it and make sure that things are going. And then second, remember, we're under contract to purchase the building. And so it's difficult for us to close on a purchase if we don't, if we have that hanging over our heads.
Commissioner Steinman, was that a motion?
Yeah, I just want to comment that when we have these situations and it involves troubled youth, if you will, or troubled adults, it definitely gets into the old NIMBY franchise of not my backyard. And I don't know what backyard to put them in if we don't put them in a place like this. Yes, there are probably other places. But I took my time today, an hour and a half of my time, to go through this and ask the director a lot of questions today. And Mr. Fiorentino was there also to help me through this. And I didn't know this existed. And I was very impressed with what they have set up to help kids who are basically coming out of troubled situations with methamphetamine or anything like that that breaks up a family, and they are in trouble and they have to escape. And these people are so organized in the way they handle these kids when they walk in the door, but yet they won't even let them stay there more than two hours at that location. And yet they perform their magic with them to get them started in the right direction, get them fed, get them housed, get them clothing. And it's a very impressive situation. And I strongly support what they're doing, and I believe it's a great addition to our community. And I don't think they're going to jump the walls. I just don't think that's going to happen. And with that, I'll make a motion...
Let me make one more comment just for the record because this is in a redevelopment agent area, and we're very concerned about the aesthetics of any structures that go in down there and how they're operated. And I think that the existing building in its current condition will be greatly enhanced by the architectural improvements and the features they're adding to this particular structure. And so I think it's going to go a long ways towards making this part of town look a lot nicer. I think that the architectural style and the colors that they've selected will be a vast improvement. And so from that standpoint, I think it's a plus to the redevelopment efforts in that area. So with that, I'll let my colleague make the motion.
On Agenda Item Number 26, SUP 24781, I will move for approval, subject condition.
And the applicant is in agreement on, we didn't add the new commitment?
That's right.
Right. I'd rather you not.
I am a bad wife.
But you're in agreement with the ones that were...
Oh, yes, absolutely. Yes, I'm sorry.
Do you have a motion for approval? Please vote. Post. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
On both items, Commissioner Truesdale abstained, and both items, 25 and 26, will go forward to City Council on December 5.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck. SUP 24800, applicant Cricket Communications, owner Nevada Power Company, to add three antennas on an existing 60-foot-high, non-stealth communications tower at 1301 North Michael Way.
Yes, thank you. My name is Cody Caldwell. I'm sorry.
Their turn.
Staff finds that additional antennas would have a negative visual impact on adjacent properties and recommends not.
Okay. Thank you. Now your turn.
Yeah, I apologize.
It's okay.
My name is Cody Caldwell. I'm at 1181 Greer Drive Suite at Las Vegas, representing Cricket Communications. And yes, we would like to add three communications antennas to a pre-existing 60-foot last tower at a substation, as to say, a Nevada power substation over Michael Way. We have reviewed the staff recommendation for denial and actually take notes that they basically take issue with two things. One is the degradation in view, as they put it, and also a setback issue. I would like to very briefly draw attention to the fact that in the analysis provided, they said there's a 600-foot separation from residential property which isn't adhered to. The thing is, if one looks at the code, it's actually, that's in reference to a tower, a brand-new tower. The tower there is actually already in place. It's... I'm sure you guys already have it, but just in case, here's the section pertaining to non-stealth wireless facilities and antenna tower. This is what Linda Hartman, the planner who wrote the report, referenced in a phone call, Section C, Part 2, stating that the 600-foot setback needs to be avoided by. However, if one looks at not the Sub 2, but its root, the small c, no antenna tower shall be within 600 feet, or to be located, that is. So I'd like to just clarify that and bring that to everyone's attention. There's no definition for antenna itself, let alone the tower. But to not be so nitpicky, basically, the intent of the code for wireless communication seems to be encouraging colocations, as to say, having multiple carriers on one structure. Currently, T-Mobile is located on this tower within the substation, and they're the only carrier. I'm not sure... pardon me. I'm not sure why we were denied the administrative approval or the, well, the recommendation of staff so much, being that it is the intent to provide colocations. And also, I'd like to draw to the fact that in the staff's report, they say that there was, only a year ago, the administrative approval to have or to allow, pardon me, T-Mobile to add 12 new antennas to the structure, which have not yet been installed. So the photo simulation and the pictures, which I'm sure you have, which I can also provide as well. Here's a general look at the substation. So this is from Michael Way, and this is Carmen, right here. That is the tower in question. Staff, I understand takes issue with the fact that they don't think our use is compatible. However, it's a public utility station, and what is there already is a 60-foot tower, which T-Mobile actually has approved in addition to their 12 new antennas, each of which... whoa. Each of which are nine feet in height, so as to say, there's going to be 108 feet of antenna going in. They also have approval for a 10-foot extension to the tower, bringing it to 70 feet in total height. And that's as provided in, well, the approval and the site plans from just a year ago. So I would, very briefly, and I know brevity is sort of an issue right now considering we're getting along in the evening. Again, T-Mobile has 12 antennas going in, each of which are nine feet, and we're simply asking for three 5-foot antennas. I'm sorry, there are six antennas, three of which on the tower in question, which is here. And so here is what it looks like now. And here is a photo simulation of what it looks like with our three antennas included. They're at 40 feet, which is below the tree line to the rear of the property, which would basically mask the antennas from view from the people to the west, which is actually the jurisdiction of Clark County. And because I didn't mention the 12 additional antennas, which T-Mobile are going to install real quick, this is what it's going to look like when all is said and done, once they build in the first quarter of next year. Boom. There are 12 new antennas going up there. So one could say, and that's already been approved. And I spoke to T-Mobile. We actually have a common architect, spectrum engineering over on West Charleston. They prepared both sets of photo simulations based upon the drawings which they drew. And again, that's already been approved, and I spoke to T-Mobile, and their plans are to build that within the first quarter of next year. And, well, as you can see, it's not the most attractive thing in the world, but it is a substation, and it is within the intent of the code and actually what they do call out for the colocation on existing structures within utility substation. So I know it's not the most glamorous thing and not the most pretty thing to look at. However, it's cricket's position that with the addition of the T-Mobile antennas which are going up there, again, early next year, our antennas, again, three antennas, each of which are about six feet in height, at about 40 feet, which are about there, won't make that much of an impact in comparison. And, yeah, it's a service-seeking situation. However, that's the only structure within the general area that would promote for a colocation. And the last thing we want to have to do is to revisit this with a brand-new poll somewhere else in the community. It's an easy step to just colocate, and we think it would behoove everyone involved just to colocate on what's existing.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. Well, I'm all for colocation, but my gosh, that thing looks like something else. The other thing is, I also read in, I think it was Portfolio Magazine, where if Google or whoever it is buys the VHF stations or the UHF stations, I guess it is, all this stuff is going to be obsolete. So, you know, I have a hard time seeing this array of stuff going up if this is all going to be obsolete in the real near future. Thank you.
Thank you. I was asked, staff or director, this was administratively approved for 12 antennas on 102006. Aren't those usually only one year?
If I may, they... actually, in this case, I don't personally recollect, but nonetheless, I'm not going to dispute it. No, they have on the admin site, I'm confused. I don't think we set a time limit on those. But at this point in time, again, staff stands by the recommendation for denial of this particular application.
Thank you. Any other... Commissioner Truesdale?
One thing I am heartened by is we are getting neighbors that take an active response in these kind of things, and we actually have cards in opposition to this. I think your argument that this looks bad, so let's make it look worse, is actually a pretty good argument, but...
Well, it wasn't the essence of the argument.
That was the essence of the argument. I mean...
Actually, promotion of colocation. I'm sorry. I apologize.
I mean, this is near homes. I just am amazed that an industry that is so leading-edge, it seems to be the least concerned about its impact on land use issues, adjacent residential and visual impact. And that's, I just think, you know, your photo rendering of how it'll look with what was approved does nothing to get me to consider that this is worth approving another antenna on this. I'd rather see you come back in with a stealth antenna someplace else that actually does what it's supposed to do and mitigate the visual impact. And this looks like a tower farm with everything that's going on there. I just don't see what this does for the community, and it doesn't... just adding more to it does not make it compatible.
Right. And if I may address your comments, our concerns are actually the, well, the intent of the code and also that of the surrounding neighborhood and not wanting to have cell phone towers in every block. No one wants that. And also, if asked what it does, it promotes, well, it gives good service to people. More and more people are not having traditional landline phones inside their house, and they're relying more on their cell phones.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Goins?
It's just plain old ugly, and from a person out of the transit business, we don't even have enough beep buttons to tell you what I think about people that talk on cell phones while they're driving vehicles.
I agree.
Commissioner Traveridge?
Well, I'm not going to beat up on you because I know you didn't come forward with this original design.
No, sir.
But, you know, I think that you're in the unfortunate position of being the one that's coming forward with the one final hair that breaks the camel's back. You know, I think that we've got a neighborhood across the street that is being really negatively impacted by this entire project. When you look at it alone, I can't imagine what that entire corner and the wall and the fences and the towers and all the structures behind it and the chain link, the economic impact on that neighborhood that those facilities create. And again, I realize it's not of your doing, but still, I can't support this. It's gone too far. You know, and if you were to come forward and say, "Well, look, we're willing to put a palm tree on the top of this thing," I would give it the same reaction you just gave me. You know, it'd be the perennial, "Put lipstick on a hog, it's still a hog."
Yes, sir.
You know, this is an overdone sight.
Was that a motion?
It certainly was. No lipstick on the hogs. Next. No. In regards to Item Number 27, Special Use Permit 24800, I would move to support staff's recommendation for denial.
We have a motion for no hogs with lipstick and approval on Item 27. Please vote. Denial. I'm sorry. Motion is denial. Motion carries.
And that is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days to the office of the city clerk.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Item 28, SDR 24254, applicant owner Hot Endeavor LLC for a proposed three-story, 125-unit senior citizen apartment development adjacent to the south side of Summerlin Parkway at the west end of Silver Sky Drive. Staff?
This application is compatible with other multifamily land uses in the area, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Applicant?
Thank you. Ernie Frizzaro, 4588 Coachman Circle, zoning and engineering consultant. With me is Melanie Schulte, the property owner and developer. And with us, Jeff Shera with Lance Bojo Architects to comment on the design review itself.
Thank you, Commissioner and Chairman. Jeff Shera, Lance Bojo Architects, 5650 DTC Parkway, Inglewood, Colorado. I know you have the site plan and the elevations in your packet, and we hope they're self-explanatory. We're here mostly to answer questions. I would point out that we went through a few variations in this study and reacted, I think positively, to the surrounding neighborhood in terms of setbacks and overall building heights. We are proposing 125 units, dwelling units total, split between two buildings. The southernmost building is a two-story building. The northern, larger building is three stories. The 125 dwelling units range from 800 to 1500 square feet, predominantly two-bedroom dwelling units for seniors. And there is a healthy contingent of lifestyle components in the split between the two buildings as well. So with that, I'd certainly welcome any questions or discussion.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. And I have one quick question. Is where's your ingress going to be?
It's the cul-de-sac, Silver Sky.
Off of that one?
Yes.
Okay. I realize you're not going to have a lot of traffic, so I just wondered if you were going to try to access from that subdivision on the west. Because it looks like the street parallels your property, doesn't it? Or is there something between you there? Is there something...
Commissioner Damaport, there's an apartment project to the west between us.
Okay. It's not showing on our picture, then. Thank you. Any other... Commissioner Steinman?
If I recall, there's an easement on this property. Is that the big issue? You did a nice job of working around the easement. That was very clever what you did in that regard. Are these people who are cooking in their own facility, or is there a central area for them to eat?
There's actually both. Every unit has a full residential kitchen, and residents certainly can cook, but there is also a couple of dining venues included.
So the south building residents have to trek to the north building for that facility, I would assume?
Yes, the main lifestyle amenities, including dining, are in the big building.
Are these units at market, or is this affordable type of residential?
It's at market.
You can speak in the microphone. Identify yourself.
Can you... yes. Name and address?
Melanie Schulte, Hot Endeavor LLC, 7201 West Lake Mead Boulevard, Speed 550, Las Vegas, Nevada.
Tell me about the pricing structure for these.
This is, I would say, middle income. Rents are going to be between $2,800 to $4,500, but it is a full-service facility, so that includes all utilities. But it is a full-service facility, so that includes all utilities, all services for the seniors, transportation, et cetera.
So this is not, they don't buy their unit, this is a rental, but the prices per month are getting in the range of a CCRC. I mean, pretty much close a full-service one, like is over there at Town Center and, yes.
Yes, but without the service, without the entry fee.
Without the entry fee.
For us younger people, could you define CCRC?
Oh, that's a community care, kind of care, whatever. It's where you have, you can start out with independent living to assisted living to nursing, skilled nursing.
Right.
That all-in-one. And they don't have it here. They only have living, independent living. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. I understand. Thank you very much. This is very nice.
Commissioner Glenns?
Is this a housing authority project?
No.
Far from it.
Not at $4,500 a month. So you're saying seniors, $2,800 a month?
Yes. Yeah. Get ready.
Don't get old.
Just put me in the backyard, next to the storage shed. Forget about it.
Commissioner Glenns, would you like us to reserve a spot for you now? We'll put you on the list.
I'd have to have my daughter start saving, I'd have to take her savings now to get in there.
How much is a closet?
Okay, I'm ready to make a motion if we have any more-
I think so.
Okay. In regards to item number 28, Site Development Review 24-254, make a recommendation to support staff approval for approval of the project. So we tell staff conditions.
If I may, just add one condition. We need to add a condition that indicates that approval shall be in compliance with all requirements of the definition of senior citizen apartments pursuant to 1904.
Of course, I was thinking about that. Yes, consider that as an additional condition.
We have a motion for approval of item 28, subject to the new condition of the director. Please vote. Post. Motion carries.
And that goes forward to council on December 5.
Thank you very much.
If I can have a job frying chicken in the kitchen, I'll stay.
29, SDR 24986, applicant owner API Nevada Properties, Inc., request for a major amendment to an existing site development plan review, SDR 13532, to decrease parking for a proposed plaza at 233 South Fourth Street. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, staff cannot support the reduction in parking at this location. As this site's use will have need for parking, even though the downtown Centennial Plan doesn't automatically apply to parking standards, staff still could not support the reduction of parking to four handicap spaces, and therefore recommends denial.
Thank you. Applicant, name and address?
Sean Mitchell, 4750 West Flamingo Road, Jones and Greenwald Architects. We're here on behalf of the applicant, API Nevada Properties. First off, want to say good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. We're here regarding SDR 24986, which is amendment to a previous staff-approved SDR 13532, which was administratively approved on June 6, 2006. That first administrative approval actually had an amendment to it dated November 17, 2006. That amendment-
I apologize.
This is the first approval. The amendment to that approval dated November 17, 2006 is this plan right here. Reason that we went for an amendment at this planned location is because we had minor modifications based on an existing tenant vacating the facility. So we were able to actually acquire the entire facility and plan it out as needed. With that, staff, again, came back with an administrative approval, and we went forward. Shortly after that, we had the site survey complete and discovered that we had some major measurement discrepancies with the existing site. With that, we had to go back and make some modifications, which you can see over here. With that, the modifications that we did make, at this point here, we, sorry.
There we go.
Yeah, there we go. All right. Can you zoom into this one one more? Thank you. This was actually never submitted to staff, but we showed this conforming to Title 19 standards. Our major concerns were that, obviously, with the additional, or excuse me, with the previous site plan layout, we weren't able to accommodate with the reduction in site width, so to speak. So we went ahead and reconfigured that, accommodating it per Title 19 standards. It didn't apply and basically kind of left us with a sort of undesirable, not only parking situation, but visual situation as well. With that, we submitted our latest, which was recommended by staff, for us to go ahead and submit this to Planning Commission and City Council for review based on the reduction in parking. Now, in this plan, we're actually showing a complete reduction of standard parking. We are offering three accessible spots on-site, and we are providing an outdoor pavilion area along with a public garden-sculpture landscape area on the Fourth Street side. We, excuse me, we were able to secure parking agreements with adjacent parking structures, one being Douglas Parking, which is within the 300-foot requirement, and the other being Fremont Street. Those two spots alone, or excuse me, those two sites alone, if I remember correctly, offer about 1,625 spots in total within their facilities. We obviously have taken this as a proactive measure, knowing that the small amount of parking stalls that we did have on-site wasn't going to be adequate. And then with obviously our site measurement reduction, we lost a good number of those as well. So again, we were taking sort of the proactive solution to not only enhance and beautify Fourth Street and our surrounding property, but to offer a better resolve for the use that's going to go into this facility. So with that, I will actually open it up for any questions.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward.
Thank you. Title 240, North 19th Street. I think I remember this, but I wonder if the applicant would tell us what use that's there? And is this valet parking that they're talking about? Or, you know, give us some idea, a little bit more of why, of the whole thing. But I will say this, I like what they're doing with the Fourth Street, the landscaping there.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, I'll close the public hearing and ask if you wish to comment.
Jason Jones, Jones and Greenwald Architects, 4750 West Flamingo. A quick comment regarding that. We actually have this as a convention facility. Per your questioning on this, the client API has actually had a facility already existing in the Las Vegas region. They brought in clients such as Mullen Fossits, Microsoft, Sony. These are all compatible with the type of facility that will be utilized on this. It is primarily going to be toward, conducive toward valet, as well as toward bus, which is why in this final, excuse me, toward bus and auxiliary parking, which is why in this final scheme, we found it's probably to both the owners as well as the city, much more of a benefit for us to actually utilize the surroundings of the building with a beautified promenade, as well as a much more urban-active sort of a presence, as opposed to what we view as a much more unsightly parking for, quite honestly, an amount of stalls that would not be very beneficial to the use. So this is something we're all very excited about in promoting toward the Centennial Plan.
Thank you. Commissioner Truitt there?
Yeah. Could you explain, you know, what is, I mean, the contract conventions, but I'm just trying to understand the use. I know it was kind of general.
Yeah.
And you talk about API having another location.
Yeah, that's-
Where are they currently operating?
Currently, they're over in the county on Desert Inn and Jodwe Brown. They have a small facility there. Basically, they started off as an adult teaching facility, and that adult training facility teaches payroll software to various companies throughout the year. Well, in their downtime, they actually had a facility that was empty and was able to be rented out. So they started having small gathering events in order to accommodate, you know, their offset, you know, costs and those things. So with that, it turned into a for-profit venture where they could go ahead and they looked at purchasing this facility downtown, which used to be an existing bank building, which has been there since 1969, formerly owned by B of A. They're actually restructuring the existing building. I'm sure you guys drive by this on a daily basis, but they're currently restructuring this existing building, removing the floors and making it appropriate for an assembly occupancy. With that, obviously, that sort of took us back to our amendment on November 17, I believe it was, adding additional egress stairs and those types of things. But basically, what we're looking at is on first floor and second floor. First floor, as Jason was saying, is going to be an exhibit space, basically a sort of blank shell exhibit space for companies like Mullen Fossits, Coca-Cola, Samsung, to come in and have small product convention shows where they can launch a new product and have these small displays. So we're talking about, and you'll read in the report that was written here, we're talking about exhibit space where we have a lot of people coming in from out of town. We have a good number of those people possibly staying in the downtown area. A good number of those people possibly being shuttled in. It's a variety. Some of those people are also coming from surrounding Las Vegas and driving into downtown to come to these events. Second-floor facility is a rentable conference facility. Again, that's going to be as an auxiliary sort of use if, let's say, we do have Coca-Cola in and they're here for a week. They can utilize that second floor for video conferencing purposes, for small gatherings of 20, 25 people per room, possibly more depending on the space. And you can see that in our layout that we have at the end of the packet given here. As for the third-floor facility, that is the existing facility that we have on Jodwe Brown and DI.
That is the White House.
That is the White House facility, and that facility will be transplanted, so to speak, to the third level of this structure. Thank you.
Commissioner Truett?
Yes. I think we're all familiar with how the convention business works in towns. Fairly hectic at set-up and tear-down times. It also involves the use of considerable number of large tractor-trailer rigs, that size vehicle. I don't see any provision here for food preparation on premises, so I would assume that you've got caterers that would be coming in. How do you propose to address all this vehicular traffic associated with the normal use of these facilities?
Actually, that's a good question. We do have kitchen facilities on-site. We have on the first floor a full kitchen that will be able to cater to smaller events. Keep in mind, in the following pages here, we do have, in that analysis, a sort of anticipated day-to-day site traffic. And we're looking at on the first floor, 500 or so people that will be going inside. To answer your question about delivery trucks and those items, we do have, I don't know if this flashes back on, but we do have on our site, obviously, a loading zone area. We will have catering trucks. I have spoken with traffic, and they have expressed concerns of being able to get large shuttles and/or truck trailers in there in order to drop off some of these items. We have accommodated that with the appropriate turning radiuses to accommodate for those larger chartered shuttles and those items. So I think we are addressing those items as for what the needs of the facility are going to be. Keep in mind, that first floor is 9,000 square feet, but the actual exhibit space that we have, and you can see here what's up on the screen now, is, I believe, only about 4,000 square feet in total. So when you're looking at it from a convention standpoint, we are going to have booths, let's say, but we're not going to have that many of them. So we can only accommodate a certain number of people, given our parameters within the actual facility itself. The whole back portion of the facility is for, obviously, restrooms, kitchen area, those types of things. So to answer your question, I think with that, you can understand the size of trucks, the delivery trucks that we're going to have. They're not going to be large tractor-trailers that you would see in a standard convention at Mandalay Bay. It's going to be something on a boutique-type scale.
Maybe I could ask the traffic people from Public Works about the turning radius that would be provided coming out of the property and its access to that relatively narrow alley, if I remember. Is that going to work, even with dealing with just, say, a 24-foot truck?
We do have concerns over that very issue. We have a condition that we recommended, condition number 13, requiring that they submit a traffic queuing analysis that shows exactly that, that the radio that they are proposing and the traffic path that they are proposing can actually work with the design vehicles that we anticipate to be using. We haven't seen that yet. That's why we've got the condition added. I cannot guarantee that the traffic path as shown is what would be acceptable until we see that, but that's why we've put that condition in there.
Very, very good. Then I have one more question concerning your solution to your parking dilemma, which is to have arrangements with two neighboring parking lots. Does this give you any kind of a guarantee access to these parking spaces, or does it simply put you in a position being your customers, your clients, go to those parking garages and they're just one more person in line?
They have actually given them the guarantee for the number of spots, which is required per API's request and for the rental of this facility. So they're actually renting out spots from them.
So the days that you're going to be having the 500 people in the first floor, you say you've got to hold us 300 parking spaces.
That is correct.
They've agreed to hold you 300 parking spaces.
They have absolutely agreed to that, and that is in their writing. That's correct.
Seeing no other questions. Was that a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the request, and my concerns have been relieved quite a bit by Public Works' condition that requires the traffic study in that alley, because I am very suspicious that you can have, say, "We're only going to have Volkswagen bus deliver stuff."
Absolutely understand.
I mean, I've been around it too long, and you guys have too. It doesn't work like that.
Sure.
You know, they are not going to take the goods that they're going to be selling or displaying out of one great big rig, transfer them into a smaller one, just so that they can make that turn a little easier.
Sure.
They're going to bring that big one in there and spend 15 minutes jockeying back and forth before they can get out of there.
And based on that, with fantastic insight, what they've done at the existing White House in their facility, if anybody's aware of it, it's right off of Jodwe Brown.
There it is.
This A-Train facility, which is what's used for these type of events, is around the backside. They've actually put in limits as to what type of truck and vehicles can be brought in per the vendor, put it on the vendor to accommodate that specific limitation.
And then I won't even go into where are those vehicles going to park.
And that's, exactly.
Because they won't go in those 300 spaces you're reserved.
Right, right. Exactly. Will not get up in a garage. That's based on the vendor and their auxiliary work.
But other than that, I think it's a great addition to the downtown array of attractions, quite frankly. So if you can work it out, good for you. And that understanding, in regards to item number 29, Site Development Review 24986, make a motion for approval. So we tell staff conditions.
Motion for approval of item 29. Please vote. Post. Motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And that will go forward to the City Council on December 5.
Moving on to item number 30. VAC 23811, applicant, City of Las Vegas, owner Kyle Canyon, or Kyle Acquisition Group LLC, petition to vacate a Bureau of Land Management right-of-way grant generally located north of Grand Teton Drive, south of Moccasen Road, between Poly Road and Fort Apache Road. Staff?
This item is in order. Staff recommends approval.
I know it's in order. It's 30. It's the next one.
Good evening.
Name and address.
Greg McDermott, City of Las Vegas, Public Works Department. What we have before you tonight is the vacation of a BLM right-of-way grant that was granted to the City of Las Vegas for the purposes of the Mountain Edge Parkway. We, as a result of the development agreement that was approved by City Council in May of this year, one of the conditions is that we apply for the vacation of this right-of-way. We've worked with Kyle Canyon Gateway to actually move this alignment further north, to tie in a little further north on US 95. One of the conditions is that this vacation cannot record until we've received that additional right-of-way to the north to kind of make a substitute for this alignment here. Be happy to answer any questions you might have on it.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to be heard, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll close the- Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and ask the commission.
I just know, the pieces that are shaded darker, who owns, who owns those pieces?
Those were not a part, I believe, private pieces. The, what you're seeing on the screen now, that, that's the, that's the right-of-way grant that we would like to vacate, what's shown on the screen now. And it wouldn't vacate any existing right-of-way or easements within the US 95 corridor. It was only what was granted to the city of Las Vegas for the Mountain Edge Parkway.
For the previous?
Right.
Okay.
Was that a motion?
No, one quick question.
Commissioner Cruzdale?
Because I, I think, you know, we had a lot of discussion on this. You're telling us this won't record. So there's absolutely no way we can, the city of Las Vegas can wind up out there vacating our Beltway and then not having something to build it in, right? I mean, there's absolutely no chance of that happening.
Yeah, Greg, maybe you can let me answer that. Mr. Chairman, if I may. We negotiated at length with Kyle Canyon Focus Property Group, the Kyle Canyon Gateway folks about this. There, the way that we have set this up is that we agreed to bring the vacation forward, such that when a transfer of other properties happened, that it would be, the vacation had already been approved, so it could record. So there would be an immediate recordation and an immediate extinguishment of that right-of-way. So we've brought this forward, but it will not record until such time as we get the property that we need. If we don't get the property, we don't, we don't record this thing, and in one year's time, it expires, and we have our easement through their property. So I am comfortable telling you that we're going to have a Northern Beltway, one way or another. It's going to be the new alignment or this alignment. And so with that, I'll leave it to you.
Thank you.
Make a motion on agenda item 30, VAC 23811, move for approval. Subject conditions.
We have a motion for approval of item number 30. Please vote. Post. Brand, raisins. Motion approved.
Commissioner Chovitch? That was unanimous approval, and that will go forward to City Council on December 5th.
Thank you.
Item 31, DIR 25056, applicant, city of Las Vegas, discussion and possible action to approve the 2008 Planning Commission dates.
If I may, the list in front of you, we do show all the correct 2008 dates. However, we're not going to, at the bottom, redo '08 again in January, so you will just be approving the '08 date.
Mr. Chairman, we do have a revised, corrected plan in your yellow sheets. Today, they're yellow. The blue sheets are yellow today instead of green like last time. And we do have a revised calendar with that correction, fixing the last two date entries.
And we want to commend staff for their, you know, accuracy on this item.
And I'd like to ask staff why the box at the bottom is on here.
Just because that's the form that we use. It's not relevant to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
This is not public hearing. Do we have a motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion on agenda item number 31, DIR 25056, move for approval.
We have a motion for approval of item 31. Please vote. Post. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Now we move to citizens' participation. Citizens' public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No subject may be acted upon by the Planning Commission unless they, that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. Seeing no one, the meeting is adjourned.